Harvard City Council Public Hearing will now be called to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem, Joseph Camara, Stephen Camara.
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lala Vila Bo.
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting, law or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item before us is this public hearing is Stephen Mello, 118 Raymond Allard Boulevard in Swansea, Choice Collision Center for a license to operate an auto body shop at 645 Brayton Avenue. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents wishing to speak. Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is an auto repair shop license for Lewis Pimentel at 25 Wyoming Street, Unit 4 in Dorchester, doing business as L&amp;S Auto Repair, for a license to operate auto repair shop at 1138 Pleasant Street in Fall River. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item three is a curb removal. Hyde Development LLC at 1500 Vine Street in Somerset, Mass. Let's start that again. Hyde Development LLC from 1500 Vine Street in Somerset, Mass, requests the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting to construct a 25-foot driveway opening as part of a new home construction. This driveway does not interfere with utilities or signage and does not have an adverse effect on on-street parking. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four is Hyde Development LLC of 1500 Vine Street, Somerset, Mass, requests the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting to construct a 28-foot driveway opening as part of a new home construction. The driveway does not interfere with utilities or signage and does not have any adverse effect on on-street parking. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five. Bridgette Viveras of 572 Locust Street requests the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting to remove an additional 11 feet of curbing to the already existing 25-foot driveway opening. This removal will provide access to park a tow camper, RV, or similar vehicle. No utilities or signage are affected by the request. Depending on the size of the vehicles and how careful people are parking, this would represent a reduction of between a partial space which would not otherwise be utilized as full space. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Just a question.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Camara?
Just a question. Five, the address I'm looking for.
572?
572 Locust. Madam Clerk, do you see what the, what streets those between is? I would think it's somewhere near Ruggles Park.
Let me see if there's a map.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What was, what was that, Madam Clerk?
I was going to see if there was a map included.
Okay. Take your time.
I expect it's probably around Grove Street or Winter Street.
Yes, it is between Winter and I think Grove.
Okay. My only concern is that's, that's a very congested neighborhood with a childcare center at the temple and the quad house. I'm just concerned about reducing the number of possible spaces that what is being indicated here is that its purpose is to store a camper or RV. And that it would possibly, they indicated would be a reduction of a partial space or a full space. So anyway, there were no objections and, but I am concerned about the, the number of driveways on that block area and how few parking spaces there are there. Anyway, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem?
Just point of clarification, this probably doesn't have anything to do with anything, but when you read the statement, where are these opinions coming from? Are they coming from the city engineer? So in terms of depending on the size of the vehicles and how carefully people are parking, this could represent a reduction between a partial space which would not otherwise, otherwise be utilized? Or is that language coming from the petitioner?
Madam Clerk?
That is coming from the city engineer.
It's coming from the city. So when he goes out there, he makes a determination on the number of spaces?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify because there's been a couple of questions. Is there any other proponents or opponents who want to speak on this item? Last call on this. Are you a proponent, ma'am? Are you in favor of it?
Yes.
Do you want to come and speak on the item? You can come, you can come do that if you'd like. Yep, just come on down. State your name and address for the record, please. Yep, have a seat. Just state your name and address for the record.
Right, right in the middle if you can.
Have a seat. Facing them. Yep, don't worry about me.
Don't worry about the President.
Don't worry about me. I'm always good. Just bring the microphone closer to your mouth, turn the microphone on, and say what you need.
You go ahead.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Viveras. I'm the property owner. It's right next to, you're talking down near the Jewish church. This is way before. It's on Grove and Locust Street, right across from, you know Knights Towing?
Yes.
It's just a little bit up further from there.
Up, mean going toward Ruggles Park?
Yeah.
When you say up.
In that direction.
Going that direction. So near the way the beauty salon is, behind where the old street's ferry bank?
Yeah, it's just, I'm over, just the block over and, you know, my home, my home is right on the corner of Grove and Locust Street.
Okay.
Let me see, I mean, around my property is, I would say more or less, you could fit on a full corner about seven to eight cars normally parked. I'm hoping actually is to open up the driveway so we can alleviate at least two cars from being parked on the street. I had originally said, you know, I would like one day maybe to park a camper in there or something, you know, my own personal use. I mean, that's why everybody wants a driveway, it's for the wrong personal use. But it will alleviate at least two vehicles from, you know, parking in the street. I don't know what else I can say, but you're, what you're looking at is completely down at the other.
Right, you've clarified for me and I, I know that that is not as tight an area. People, people that are going to the quad house wouldn't park that far away from the quad house.
No, no, I would hope not.
Right, from the Ruggles Park, right. All right, Ms. Viveras, thank you. I yield, Counselor President.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Again, final call for proponents and opponents. Hearing none. Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item six. Michael Cudo, 555 Broadway Street, requests the removal of curbing as follows.
Move to open the public hearing.
The petitioner is requesting to remove an additional 10 feet, 7 inches of curbing to the already existing 17-foot driveway opening on Oliver Street. The partial contains a commercial building and a residential building. The existing curb opening is necessary for, can't speak. Viability of the commercial business and requests that we provide additional access to park a vehicle. The additional driveway area does not adversely affect on-street parking on Oliver Street. Is there a motion open?
Motion.
Motion to open. The hearing has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion, is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on item six? Any opponents? Hearing none. Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item seven is Underground Conduit, North Main Street National Grid, requests to install conduit duct bank from manhole 38 and the sidewalk on the northeast, northwest side of North Main Street to manhole 185. Pavement sidewalk and curb will be restored to original conditions in accordance with Plan Number 2399-2703 dated October 15, 2018. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So be it.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents wishing to speak. Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak?
The President.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you. Come on down, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I thought you were coming a second, but. State your name and address for the record, please. Turn the microphone on, please, Mr. Sullivan.
Just pull the mic closer to you.
Just pull the mic closer to you and push the button up or down.
My name is Patrick Sullivan, Program Manager, National Grid. So the, the purpose of this, excuse me, new manhole that will be installed on North Main Street is for a switch that currently would not fit in the existing manhole, so we're proposing to add a new manhole to allow for a switch installation that would improve the feeder's reliability, reliability. That's the purpose of this.
Thank you. Many questions? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier?
How much of the pavement and sidewalk are you disrupting?
The, the total hard surface area restoration and square footage is 362 square feet, and that would just cover a road crossing of the duct to the new manhole on the opposite side of the road from the existing.
Are you doing curb to curb?
The, right now, based on the drawings that we have, we do not, we have not identified this to be curb to curb.
So how big is the opening?
I would have to defer to my engineer who's currently here, but if, if we don't have that answer for you, we can certainly get it to you.
Your engineer's here, he can ask the question. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Patrick Agubian, I'm a contractor for National Grid. I mainly did, well, the electrical design for this as well as I chose the location of this manhole.
Slow down, I can understand you.
Sorry. So I was the, the design engineer for this project. My main responsibility was to design the electrical component as well as choose the location of the manhole, so.
All right, so you're responsible for filling the tar on the sidewalk?
No.
So all right, how big is this hole?
So the hole, so the manhole itself is 14 by 7. That's going to go in the sidewalk curb in front of, I believe it's 870 North Main Street. It's over by the Family Dollar Auto Zone Plaza. In order to get the cables from existing manholes to the new manhole, we'll have to dig a approximately 53-foot trench from the existing to the, to the new manhole, and that trench is about three feet wide, so three feet wide by 50 feet. That's about 150 feet, square feet of asphalt.
So that's one opening going down the road or not across the road, down the road?
It will be going across.
It'll be going across?
Yes.
And you guys don't want to do curb to curb?
We would be essentially repaving whatever is disturbed by the crossing.
North Main Street, right?
Yep.
I mean, that's a busy street.
Yes.
If anything, you guys should do curb to curb. If you're going to do that much, do curb to curb.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way it should be because a couple years down the road, we said, hey, this guy didn't do the right job and everything else. We're here to make sure that it does get right, and I feel that you should do curb to curb.
Okay. I believe when I did do the civil estimate, I believe my, the estimate did include curb to curb restoration.
So why, why are you telling us you're not going to do it?
I didn't, I mean, I didn't say we were not going to do it, but.
No, well, you didn't say you were going to do it either, you know? We have to.
My apologies.
So you're going to do it right, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
We're going to guarantee, we have, you're going to do it right?
Yes.
We'll put it in writing?
Yes.
All right, then. I want to make sure that the job is done right.
Okay, yeah.
Curb to curb?
Understandable, yep.
Okay. And how soon is the project going to start?
That I would not know.
Likely year 2020, if not 2021.
Holy, 2020.
Some ways out.
Yeah, well, I hope I'm still here. Just, just make sure it's curb to curb. If I'm not here, they really want to curb to curb, that's it. All right, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem?
Thank you, I just need some clarification. So we're in the street or we're in the sidewalk? Says sidewalk here.
So the manhole itself, so that's going to be in the sidewalk, but there's conduits that need to go from the existing manhole underground to the new manhole so that we will go across the street with just the conduits, but the manhole itself?
So you're doing a trench from one sidewalk to the next sidewalk?
Yes, yep.
Your 53-foot is in the sidewalk itself, is that where you?
No, the 53-foot trench is mostly in the street.
It's in the street?
Yeah, about, I want to say about five or 10 feet of it will be in the sidewalk.
Okay. I've stated this before and it probably has nothing to do with this, but since National Grid is here, can we just have the administration come back down with the number of double polls that we have out there? And I know these folks are just coming for this, but every time that National Grid takes down a telephone poll, we've got to wait for Comcast, we've got to wait for all the other poll companies, what they call ball and cart, but at some point, we've got a number of double polls out there that need to get rectified in the city. So if we can get that list there, I for one, if we don't have some type of plan moving forward, won't approve anything from National Grid moving. And I know it's not all your responsibility, I know you're typically the last people to, to get everything, you got to wait for Comcast and everybody else that's on that, on these polls, but, you know, we need to start addressing these throughout the city. So I've said this before and I say it again, that we need to stop maintaining this, and then just any type of work that's being done in the roadways and the pavements, I think we should at least have city engineer to come down and talk about what the process should be, what the specs are required and under the ordinance to make sure that as the city council, we're all on the same page and that there's no question as to when National Grid says they're going to open up a roadway, what they're going to be fixing. You know, is it curb to curb? If we want curb to curb, then we should start putting in an ordinance in place to say this is what we want. Anytime somebody opens up our roadways, you're responsible to do a curb to curb restoration to ensure our infrastructure is properly maintained, so with that, I yield.
Madam, thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, is there anything in committee that is tabled? I remember Counselor in seat two and Counselor in seat one speaking about this earlier in the year. Is any of these issues that Counselor in seat one raised tabled in any committees at this point that you are aware of?
Off the top of my head, I believe there is something in.
Public Works in Transportation?
Yes, but I'm not certain without looking at the pending list.
Counselor, do you know, Counselor in seat eight, do you know if you have an item tabled in your committee on this?
I believe there is, we can, we can bring it up.
Okay, so since it's already in, in your committee, my suggestion would be the next meeting that you, that you call to invite National Grid and members of the administration to come down so that we could properly answer Counselor in seat one's valid questions on this. Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor, you good with that or do you want to file a resolution? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem, good with that?
I'm good with it, I'm just not sure what resolution's in there, but I'll just assume it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can get, we can check the list tomorrow and get a copy.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the resolution's not sufficient enough, then we can, I'll file another resolution.
Fair enough, thank you, Counselor. Any further questions for the proponents? Thank you, gentlemen. Any further proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight is the adoption of the percentage of a local tax levy to be borne on each class for property in fiscal year 2019. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi, the assessor, and members of the Board of Assessors is here with us tonight for questions that Counselors have. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President, and we are before you here this evening. As you know, that the tax increase percentage was already approved by the City Council by virtue of the establishment of the 2019 budget. We're here this evening to determine if there should be a shift in the assessment between the residential and the commercial properties. At the present, the current year, the shift is 1.70. As you know, the maximum would be 1.75, so we're at 1.7 currently, and I'm going to ask the members of the Board of Assessors to, who met earlier this afternoon, to give us their determination and recommendation regarding the shift for fiscal year 2019.
If you could just turn the microphone on, please. Thank you.
And if you could introduce who's joined you, Mr. Gonzales?
Yes, Madam Counselor, Counselors, to my right.
Richard Henson, member of the Board.
Richard Gonzales, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. As Administrator Viveras said, we met earlier this afternoon, and the Board, upon the advice of the Administrator and the administration, we voted to accept a 1.72 factor, which equates to the residential factor of.
The tax rate would be $14.59. Commercial rate would be 31.38. The increase on an average home would be 135.56. The increase on a commercial would be.
The increase on a commercial would be, uh, three seventy-three, sixty-three.
Now, as you're aware, councilors, we had a revaluation done this year. It did generate increases in the assessed valuations of, of the residential and commercial properties. The shift from one point seven zero to one point seven two was an attempt to try to ease the increase on the residential properties, based on the increased assessed valuations, um, that they are experiencing, um, due to the revaluation.
And madam city administrator, just for part of information, uh, the current factor be, that we have in, uh, the fiscal years, one point seven oh, is that what you indicated?
Yes, that's correct.
And your recommendation to the council from the, uh, the assessors board is one point seven two?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much, counselor in seat one, Councilor Akadeem.
Apologize, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gonzo, you said that based on the recommendation of the administration, that the board voted on the one seven two. Either yourself or the administration, I'm just curious, just looking at the, I mean, it's just a little bit different than what the game plan has always been in terms of, you know, moving forward on tax factors, I mean, we've had the Chamber of Commerce come down and advocate, and, you know, I think everybody has their own philosophical opinions on what the tax factor should be. So I'm just trying to figure out what the shift is this year compared to what we saw last year and the year before that, in terms of trying to get that tax factor down a little bit, so it's not impacting the businesses as much. Uh, so I'd, I'd let, ask that question, and then I've got a follow-up question after that, so...
So actually, um, counselor, last year, the administration and the Board of Assessors, um, came before the city council and had recommended a, I believe it was a one point six nine factor, um, last year, and that was in acknowledgement of, um, an interest in trying to gradually, uh, provide some relief to businesses, given the incentive to try to encourage economic development, um, and job creation. This year, and actually, it was the city council, um, that did not accept the recommendation of the administration and the Board of Assessors last year, and actually moved to increase, um, the shift to the current one point seven zero. This year, again, in acknowledgement of the fact that we are in a revaluation year, and the residential properties were seeing, um, some increases in their values, the thought was, is that the one point seven two, uh, factor would allow for, um, less of an impact on the residential property owners, given the new increased assessed valuations that they're gonna see on their bills. So I guess the, in, uh, in summary, counselor, it's kind of been back and forth where I think that the administrations, and not just the current, but in the past, have attempted to try to work, um, and I think in, in concert with the city council, to try to acknowledge the importance of making the Fall River attractive to businesses, and trying to acknowledge, um, the real estate taxes that are paid by our commercial, uh, property owners, and as you know, the commercial rate, as Mr. Gonzo's mentioned... Certainly, Mr. Mello?
May I interject? The residential values went from two hundred and seventeen thousand, fifty dollars to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. So if you shift, if you keep the shift at one point seven oh, the tax bill will, for the residential person, will go up a hundred and thirty-five dollars. If you, if you shift it to one point seven two, the tax rate will actually decrease by three cents, but because of the increase in the values, the tax bill will still go up by a hundred and fourteen dollars.
So I, that's gonna, that was gonna be my second part of the conversation, is that... Try, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, are we, are we trying to be a little bit more pro-business versus residential? Cause all we're doing is, for the people that don't understand this at home, is that we've got a pool of money for taxes, our tax levy. Now we're just making a determination as to who's gonna pay for the burden, right? So, if we go with the one seven five, we're placing all the burden that we possibly can under the law with the commercial property, right? Easing the burden on residential. So it's trying to obviously strike a balance, but I, going from the one six nine to the one, I mean, the one seven oh to the one seven two, I don't know that we accomplish anything, I mean, we're talking about on the, on an average, if we take the average property value, you have an eighty-three cent increase, or, I'm sorry, decrease in residential, right? Based on this, unless the, am I reading this wrong, so if we're going...
I don't know what you're reading, Councilor.
So one thirty, the change is a one thirty, a hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, right? If we left it at one seven nine, I mean, at one seven nine?
One seven zero.
If we left it at one point seven oh, would the, the average tax bill on the average family...
Would, would go up a hundred and thirty-six dollars.
A hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. So if we go, if we go to the one seven two, it decreases by, the increase decreases only by eighty-one cents?
No, counselor, it would go to, one seven two would go to a hundred and fourteen dollars? I rounded mine. Um, so there'd be actually a savings of twenty-two dollars, because there'd be a decrease in the rate of three cents per thousand.
So what do you, I guess where... Where does it say that, madam? I, 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 I see one thirty-six, thirty-nine, and then I've got, if we go to the one point seven two, it's telling me the change would be one thirty-five, fifty-six.
Yeah, counselor, that's based on the factor from, of one point seven two, of two thousand eighteen's value and two thousand nineteen's value. It's not based on the fact...
You're not comparing, I, I see what you're saying.
I'm not comparing with the fourteen sixty-two of last year's tax rate.
Okay.
My, my, that was my fault on that, I should've, I should've included that.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
And counselor, actually, Mrs. Sahadi did the actual calculation, if you'd like her to just take a few moments, she can run through the actual impacts, um, if, if you so desire.
No, that, that, that's fine, I'm sorry, I thought you were taking the change from the various tax factor. So I'll, I'll yield for now, I just wanna quickly do some...
They should, they should've done that.
Thank you very much, any further, Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier?
Yeah, uh, the tax, one thirty-six, that's based on the two hundred and seventeen thousand valuation of the house?
No, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five?
To, yes, the average tax, the average valuation went from two seventeen, two hundred and seventeen thousand, fifty dollars to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, based on the market, based on the sales.
So the guy owns a house for two and a quarter, pays one thirty-six extra?
Correct.
That's one...
Well, actually, one fourteen extra. If you, it'll, if you shift to one point seven two, his tax bill will go up a hundred and fourteen dollars.
And do we have any complaints on the other end?
The, the commercial's not gonna go up, uh, it's gonna go up like seven cents, I think it is.
Seven cents?
Mrs. Sahadi, do you wanna give us...
If we, if we can, if, if, councilors, if we can, I'd like to interject for a moment. I think it'd be appropriate for us to very quickly go through the tax factor in terms of what the increase will be on the commercial and the residential side, because there's confusion with the document that we have before us, because if you look at this document quickly, it actually looks like it's going up a hundred, you know, depending on what factor you use. So if you could just elaborate very quickly for the council on each factor, and what the increase is going to be for commercial and residential, so that we have a full understanding of that, because it's not clear here.
So, so, Council President and councilors, um, if we leave the rate the same, at the one point seven zero, the increase to the residentials, um, including the increase in the value of the property and the decrease in the rate, would increase an individual's bill with an average property of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of a hundred and thirty-six dollars. If we change that rate to one point seven two, their bill will increase by a hundred and fourteen dollars. Using the same two rates, the one seven and the one seven two, um, the commercial will go up three hundred and seventy-four dollars at the average, um, commercial property at six hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. To three hundred and seventy-four dollars, the new rate, one seven two, would bring their increased bill to five hundred and eighty-five dollars, or an increase of two hundred and eleven dollars. Does that make it a little bit clearer?
Counselor in seat seven, you still have a thought?
Give me for the commercial, per hundred thousand, how much?
At what tax factor?
Well, that would, that would be the factor, so it would...
Well, you, you gave us a figure of, for six hundred thousand, right?
Right.
So what's for a hundred thousand?
It'll be eleven cents per, per thousand.
The increase.
The increase.
Eleven cents.
So it'll be a hundred and ten dollars per a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten dollars per one hundred thousand.
And if it's with six twenty-one, you're telling me three seventy-six, three hundred and seventy-six dollars increase, increase?
If we go to a factor of one seven two, it'd be five hundred and eighty-five dollar increase. If we stay at the factor of one seventy, the increase would be three seventy-four on the commercial.
Then we still got, uh, two and a half on top of this?
No, this, this isn't, this is the, this is the shift.
That's the shift.
Right. So, counselor, in short, if you agree to the shift from one seven zero to one seven two, your residences will actually be saving twenty-two dollars?
From the one seventy.
From what it would be at the one seven oh. So by going from one seven oh to one seven two, the residences will, the residences will save twenty-two dollars. By going from the one seven oh to the one seven two, the commercial properties, again, average value, will increase by two hundred and eleven dollars. So those are your, those are your offsets using the average assessed value.
Alright, just, just so I understand what's going on, and I certainly wanna do the right vote, and we'll see what happens with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor in seat six, Councilor Long?
Just, uh, I think before we get started on these things, every year it gets confusing, and we start talking about saving the taxpayers' money. Understand, whatever we do, this year, the taxes are going to go up. So, when you hear savings, you're still gonna be paying more money. But let me ask you a question, number one is, two thousand eighteen, can you give me the breakout of total valuations of city property in the city of Fall River residential commercial?
Sure.
Two thousand eighteen's total value, real and personal property, was five billion, three hundred and twenty million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
That's total?
That's the total for...
Everything.
Everything. For, for nineteen...
Can you get, can you break that up?
You wanna break it down, sure. Absolutely, residential was four billion, one hundred and thirty-two million, three hundred, thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Commercial was six hundred and ninety-three million, two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. And industrial was three hundred and ten million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. And personal property was a hundred and eighty-five million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars.
So on a percentage basis, the residential property accounts for how much?
Seventy-nine percent, seventy...
So when we're looking at this, just so people understand... Approximately eighty percent?
Sixty fi, what, no, what is it?
It is approximately eighty percent, I know it's...
What is it, seventy-nine percent, almost eighty percent?
Seventy-eight percent.
Seventy-eight percent. Seventy, seventy-eight percent, yeah, I think it's seventy-nine, I don't know if it's close.
Yeah, close enough.
Close enough, yeah.
Alright, so when we're looking at this, you're looking at the valuations of, of property in the city of Fall River, approximately, just keep round numbers, eighty percent of the valuation, of our tax valuation, is based in the residential side. And only twenty percent is on the commercial industrial side.
Correct.
So then, when we're talking about these numbers, that's why you see such a big jump. When we say we're gonna move two, two per, two percent, or two points, okay, that, oh, we're gonna save the residents a hundred and fourteen dollars, but when you move it those two points, the commercial side goes up by four hundred dollars. And you say, how does that happen? Well, that's how it happens, is there's not enough room on the commercial side to absorb it. So that, and that's where the big issue is. So when we're looking at this, you say eighty percent of the valuation is in residential. So that even if we start moving these things just little points, on the residential side, it might only amount to fourteen dollars, but on the commercial side, it can amount to four hundred dollars. And when we look at the average values here, I would think the average is mostly, and I think we've been through this a couple times, cause I know we're talking about simple things, um, this would be basically a, uh, single-family or maybe a two-family home, when we talk about the average value on the residential side. So we're not talking about the larger residential pro, uh, properties, three families, six families, that type of stuff, so...
Right, what we do is we take all of the residential properties, nine thousand seventy-one, and you divide it by the total value of all the, and that's where you come up with the two twenty-five.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just saying, just, when we start talking about this, it gets confusing. But I think what we, you have to look at the base of which we're talking about, and when we're talking about the tax valuation, eighty percent of that valuation is coming on the residential side, so that when we start to talk about it, you know, we're only talking pennies, and sometimes dimes, and maybe a couple dollars. But the translation on the other side, when we say, we're gonna put the burden on the business, we really do put the burden on the business, because they get hit hard, even with a one-point change in, in the, uh, in the tax factor. A two-point change in the tax factor can mean, and on the average, again, we get back here, on the average, we're talking a six hundred thousand dollar commercial property, they get hit for six hundred dollars, and there's, then there's properties, uh, commercial properties in the city of Fall River that are way over that six hundred thousand, and they could get hit for a thousand dollars, or two thousand dollars in a tax increase when we start moving this factor. So that, I just want people to understand it, that we need to keep that, that factor down to have more growth, so that we can start to balance these numbers a little bit, so that the commercial side of this grows. Now, my second point was, is, what was the total valuation, two thou, going forward, what's the total valuation increase? How much do we increase by?
Well, I can, I can break it down for you, fiscal year nineteen. You want the increase for each one, it'll be fifteen million for residential, fifteen million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Went up fifteen million?
Fifty million, fifty.
Fifty, five oh.
Five oh, two hundred and sixty-six, nine hundred dollars, that's, that's all the residential properties.
That's the increase?
That's the increase in value. That's all new growth, yeah.
That's with new growth?
That is new growth, if you took that and you multiply it times the tax rate, you'd get seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and two dollars in new growth. I'm looking at the growth right here, that's what we want, yeah. That's the increase of the growth.
You want the increase of the total residences?
Increase total residential, we talked about four billion, one hundred and thirty-two million, what's it now?
Oh, okay, so the total increase, now, I'm sorry, I gave you the growth increase. The total increase, the revale, was a hundred and ninety-one million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and two dollars, which is a lot higher than fifty million.
Okay, so it went from four billion to what? Four bil, four point one billion to what, to total?
To four point three two nine, oh two four, seven forty-seven.
So it went up by two million?
Uh, no, a hundred, a hundred and ninety-one million.
Uh, a hundred and ninety-one million of valuation?
Yeah, it went from four million, one thirty-two, three hundred, three ninety-three, to four mil, four billion, three twenty-nine, oh twenty-four, seven forty-seven.
And what was the commercial?
Which is four point six percent, yeah.
What was the commercial?
The commercial went down. Three million, six hundred, twelve thousand, six hundred and eight dollars.
So your commercial side went down?
Less than a half percent, yeah.
But it still went down?
Yes.
So we're losing commercial properties, but we're gaining residential?
The values, yes.
Is that correct?
We're not losing the properties, we're just re, the, the values.
Well, the value's gonna be by vacancies and all the other type of stuff, but we did not gain commercial property. Did we, or did we not?
No, we didn't.
So it basically stayed even?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, very...
But we gained a whole bunch on the residential side?
Yes.
So when we talk about economic development, I mean, these are the type of numbers you need to look at to say, are we getting it? We can be great, gain, we can be gaining on this side, but if other places are closing, it's just, the weights and balances just sort of stays even. So what, what, what do you think that causes, do you have any idea? What's causing that?
What's that?
Well, counselor, the, the assessed values are influenced by sales and activity within the market.
I understand.
So it's, if there's not a lot of inflation, if you will, or increased value, um, then, you know, that's, that's clearly driving that assessed value. Um, and I know we have some real estate folks here, but clearly, the residential market, um, the property values are increasing because of demand, and people are willing to pay more, um, yes, Mr. Gonzo?
Excuse me, uh, Ben, Ben's Office sent out a total of, uh, three thousand four hundred plus income and expense. Now, let me tell you a little bit about what's happening, and it's not only in Fall River, it's pretty much all of Massachusetts. On commercial properties, we do it based on the income approach, so what, what Ben's Office does... So what, what Ben's office does, and every other assessor's office does, is we send out income and expense statements. We ask to see your vacancies, your expenses, your rents, and we, and he doesn't analyze each and every one of them as they come in. So what, what happens is, it's a, it's a reevaluation. He's going through the income and expense statements. Now, in the commercial market, one of the things is leases, they're the big things, lease types. We have different types of lease types. We use what's called triple net leases. They, they develop the values. So just to give you an example, if you have a 10-year lease, and we're in year three, and the, there's no escalation clauses, and the rent is stable, then pretty much so, if your vacancies is stable, your expenses is stable, your rent is stable, and your cap rate is stable, when you add them all up, you have a, a stable value. Your value doesn't increase, the value stays the same. So that's pretty much what's happening throughout the whole Commonwealth. Is because, you know, you're in on long-term leases, and even at that, what's, what happens as well is that when a tenant, when a owner of a property has a vacancy, him and her has the idea to say, well, wait a minute, I'd rather have a new tenant come in at less than what I was getting before, because vacancies I don't make money on. So when Ben looks at these income and expense statements, what will happen is, in a lot of cases, we see the rent drop. And when the rent drops, again, the value's going to drop. That doesn't necessarily mean that the commercials are going soft. It just necessarily means at this point in time, from the rents that we're asking for and the rents that we're collecting, it's showing little to no increase. And it's flat. But that, but that doesn't mean that there's no growth, because Ben, on the other hand, there, there was 11, 11 million, 448,120 in new growth on the commercial side. It's separate. And that's your new buildings that are coming in, or any kind of improvements that are happening.
So that's not in these numbers, the growth?
Yes, it's on the side, it's, Benny, Ben, Ben has what's called an LA 13 in front of us. I don't know if the councillors have any, and, but that, that's actually showing the breakdown of your valuation total and your valuation of new growth. Now, you, you can add them all up, and that's the number that Ben gives when he says the value's increased on the residential side of 191 million. So we have to have that separate in order to calculate the new growth, because what you have to determine is what's your new growth, what happened in terms of changes in the, in the city, the demos, they play an important part, abatements play an important part, and also the fact that the reevaluation side plays an important part. So once he figures these items out, what's left in the equation is the new growth, which is critical to the city to, to gain its...
I'm just trying to keep this...
It's levy.
This is, this gets complicated as we get into this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to keep it as simple as possible. We can see the growth in the residential, just by the numbers. You can see it just driving around the city. We see properties being rehabbed and increased, and we talk about market rate housing and that type of stuff going on. But on, on the commercial side, and I understand everything you're saying, we've had, we, we've had growth. I, I know where the growth is.
We have the Japanese restaurant.
Yeah, I get it. There's plenty of them, plenty of them, plenty of them. But on the other side, we're not seeing what's happening there, where, you know, some of the, some of the, the income, they're taking less grants or whatever, and that's why we don't see the number growing. And my only point here is that when we start talking about these points and saving $14 to the average taxpayer residential, that $14 translates to $400 on the, on the commercial side. And that's all I was trying to, that's the only point that I'm trying to make.
Let me, let me bring out one other point. When we look at your big-time commercials, and I'm not saying the city is all big-time. We have a lot of small commercial businesses, and that's taken separately. But the actual big tenants, in the world that we have, if you have a mall or you have a, a retail outlet, in this business, it's called triple net leases. And basically, the owner of the property isn't responsible for the taxes. When that tax bill comes in, he or she divvies that up between the tenants. And I, I just want to make that clear. And the residents of the city, if you have a house, we don't have that option. So I, I, I'd just like to make that, that point.
Thank you councillor. And Mr. Mello or Mr. Gonzo, if one of yous can answer this for me, I'm just curious, when you take your, as a point of information, when you take your income approach, what cap rate are you using, what vacancy factor are you using, and what percentage do you give for deferred maintenance? Because that's all part of your income approach.
What, what happens is, when we, when we develop cap rates in the mass appraisal, we develop two rates, basically. We develop a, a triple net lease rate, and we develop a loaded rate, which includes the tax factor.
Yep.
So in answer to your question, councillor, president, when you have a higher tax rate, in a sense, the commercial people have a lower value.
Right.
Because it's a risk. So one, one of the things is, in simple terms, the lower the cap rate, the higher the value. So that being the case, when you have, if you're using a nine-and-a-half cap rate on a property, you're going to come up with a X amount. If you use that loaded cap rate, which our loaded cap rate's going to be somewhere close to 12, that value is going to drop. So that factor is taken into account, taxes. Now, as far as expenses go, I believe Ben is using 3% to 5% as an average. And then what happens is, in the system, he has multipliers, which can take effect for neighborhoods. So that 3% to 5 vacancy that he's using, in some areas, may be 10, maybe 15, maybe 20, and depending upon use, and based on the actual property, can go higher, as high up as 40% or higher. As far as the expense go, it's, it's going to be basically on a triple net lease, it's going to be 10%. And included in that 10%, you're going to have a percentage set aside for reserve for replacement, management fee, and any bad debt.
Fair enough. You answered my question, thank you. Councilor on C2, councillor Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just out of curiosity, you said the average homeowner's property value is $215,000?
$225,000.
$225,000?
Yeah.
Do you know what it is in New Bedford by any chance?
No.
Mr. Gonzo, any idea what it is? Say New Bedford, what's the app? I just find the, the value itself, 225, to be very low. To be very low, even though it just increased. I think, I don't know anyone here that would, I mean...
Well, it's, councillor, it's a simple formula. Like I said, you take all of the residential properties, and you divide it by the, the total value of all the residential properties, or the single-family houses, and that gives you a...
Yeah, I just find it to be low. Compared to other communities, guaranteed, we're a lot lower than the city of New Bedford. I don't even know what this is, but I guarantee it's over 215. When I look at what houses are selling for, they're selling for significantly higher. I don't remember last time I saw a house sell for 215 or 220 or 225. It's, just find it to be low. But, I mean...
I had one today, isn't it? I pulled, just to make an example.
Here's the mic.
I had a deed, I had a deed today.
Yeah.
The house sold for 167. And I had one for 175, 192, 375, 380, you know, so they fluctuate. It's, so you do have your lows, and you do have your highs. It all depends on what neighborhood you're in, and what kind of, what type of house it is.
I just think overall, like, by city average value of properties, I think it's low compared to other communities that I look at. Basically, what the council's doing today to make it simple for people sitting at home watching is that residents are going to pay more, and the commercial are going to pay more, regardless of what we do. And what the tax factor does is it lowers, if we choose to, the residential burden, and it raises, if you're going to lower this one, you have to raise this one a little bit to compensate for this one. So that's what we're doing. We're just evaluating and adjusting the tax factor, and it's a matter of who do we want to give relief to. In the past, as councillors have mentioned, we, I mean, I don't know when it started, 1980, 19... What year did the tax factor start? 1980? When it went to 1.75, I think it was in the early eighties. Do you know, Mr. Mello?
What's that?
When the 1.75 tax factor kicked in, so you could adjust the factor?
1981.
1981. So ever since then, the burden routinely in the city has been on the commercial property. And homeowners would get the significant savings. And then maybe 12 years ago, when the council, jobs, unemployment being what it is, commercial properties struggling, this council took it upon itself to adjust the factor to help out businesses. And now that the economy's doing well, and businesses are doing more, and the burden's been shifted to the homeowner's side, this council has gradually, last year or so, gone back to helping out the residents and putting the burden a little bit back onto the businesses. And that's, seems to be the direction we're going on today. So I don't have a problem with that, that tax factor. I think it's, it's good to adjust it, so that at some points, depending on what the value is, the values of residential properties seem to have gone up a lot higher than the businesses, from what I'm understanding.
Oh, it includes the growth too?
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of what this council chooses to do, to make it very simple. Do we want to give more burden to the residential properties or to the commercial properties? And I guess that'll be determined by the vote that's taken here. The recommendation's 1.7?
Two.
Two. With that, Ayew, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councilor on C3, councillor Kamara.
Yeah, I think to clarify and to just simplify, that the higher the tax factor, so we're at 1.72. If we went to 1.75, that would provide for greater relief to the residential taxpayer, and would provide for a bit less relief, or a higher burden, on the business taxpayer. So what we need to do is decide where, where do we see the need to be the greatest? And I tend to be always on the side of increasing the tax fire factor to provide for greater benefit for the residential taxpayer, because I think the residential taxpayer are, are struggling the most. They're faced with the increased water and sewer bills that have gone up exorbitantly. They're, they're faced with increased insurance costs, their increased mortgage costs. I know from my own perspective, that because the feds have been gradually increasing the percentage that they're charging, that anyone that's got a, a loan that's based upon that is, is paying more money. I have one particular mortgage that I'm familiar with, because I've noticed it's been gradually going up. It was down to about $1,400 a month, and now it's almost at $2,000 a month. So this is what residential taxpayers are facing. Increases in water, sewer, insurance, and maintenance cost, all have increased. On the other hand, and they, and they're often, particularly those on fixed income, don't have, don't have another place to go. They can't raise the sale of their anything, because they're not selling anything. Businesses, on the other hand, can put another nickel onto their candy bar, or put another dollar onto their dinner at the restaurant. And consumers are still going to be paying. I mean, basically, consumers are going to pay out of one pocket, or they're going to pay out of another pocket. But we can't control that. And people can control whether or not they go to the restaurant as often as they have in the past. If they see the prices are climbing up too high, they may stay home. They may not, or they may go to a lesser expensive restaurant. So they can control that to some extent. On the other hand, the residential taxpayer doesn't have anything to control. They're at the whim of, of we the, we the people that are burdened with the responsibility of deciding where the relief should come. So my inclination is to promote the higher tax factor. And, and I'd like to go now to the point of, what if this council establishes a 1.75 factor, providing the maximum relief to the residential taxpayer? What does that do to both the business community, and what does it do to the residential community?
Councillor, it would be approximately an $80 increase on the residents and a $947 increase on the commercial.
How much for resi, residential?
80.
80, as opposed to keeping it at 172?
At 172, the, the increase would be $114.
So if we can go to 175, we're basically going to be saving the taxpayer at approximately $25 on, on their bill. And that, that, that to me is not a significant amount, but it is a significant amount to those who are on fixed income, trying to figure out how they're going to pay.
$34.
$34.
$34.
$34, so, so I'll, I'm prepared, when this comes before us, to make a motion to adopt a 1.75 tax factor. I hope my colleagues will agree with me that it is, it is the residential taxpayer that needs relief the most, and that we need to proceed accordingly. We are seeing great growth in business. I'm happy to see that. I recognize that, that it's a tough decision to make, but I do think that the business community has a greater opportunity to absorb that additional cost than does the residential community, many of whom are retired, many of whom are on fixed incomes, and many of whom are looking for relief. We've, we've burdened them with increased water and sewer bills, significant increases in water and sewer bills. And I think this is an opportunity for us to say, we're going to provide some relief in another channel by doing the least bit of harm to your pocketbooks by putting the maximum relief toward the residential taxpayer. So that's what I'll be doing, and I hope my colleagues will support that. Ayew?
Thank you. Councilor on C4, councillor Kilby.
Just one quick question. New Bedford, what is their tax factor? New Bedford, say, New Bedford. Richard, you know?
I, I think it's going to be close to the 1775. I think they went out, they maxed last year at 175. I could be wrong, but I...
And we were 175 forever.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe they probably wiggle down to the 172, which, which was recommended by the board today.
Well, we'll see if there's anybody from the chamber here. It is a public hearing. We could some input from them, so. Ayew, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor on C1, councillor Kadeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know there's been a lot of conversation with regards to New Bedford, so just on the FY '18, their average single-family value was $211,759, compared to our fiscal year 2018 of $217,050. Their average tax bill is $3,522 for FY '18. Our tax bill for FY '18 was $3,173. Even if we stay at the 1.7, your residential tax rate is still going to be less than New Bedford, right? We're going to be paying $3,309.66. So one thing I do want to caution, and I, I know we've got to find that balance. We have to strike the balance, I understand that. But you just talked about all the commercial growth that we have seen. So if we start looking at some of these properties that we've starting to see commercial growth, and before we even get to the commercial growth, sales were about a year lag on what real-time market value, right?
We used the 2017 sales.
Right, so we're a January, January 1 community?
And you know '18, they were...
Right. So we've, so we're a January 1 community, so we're about a year behind on what the actual market value sales are, so we're going to still continue to see some increases. But the commercial increases that you're seeing, I mean, let's, let's take the South Coast Marketplace. That place was vacant for how long? I mean, years, right? So the, the impact that has had on the city in terms of tax revenue, because now you're taxing it at a much lower rate than commercial if it was fully occupied versus vacant. You start looking at the trampoline park on, on President Ave, similar situation where that was a vacant parcel. So as these businesses, if we start to continue to burden some of these commercial businesses, and we potentially lose these businesses, it's not a quick rebound to get these properties redeveloped, which have more of an impact. And, and I recognize that, you know, there are individuals on fixed, fixed income, so the, the increases are significant. What I would just urge my councillors to consider is, is we have to strike that balance, and there is a real exposure if you overburden the commercial piece. So when we start looking at everything that we've increased, we increase taxes 2.5%. We're going to look at the burden. We saw, to my colleague in C3, we saw the water and sewer rates increase. They just have to increase to sustain some of the debt and infrastructure improvements that we have. You look at the CSO rate, that's a flat fee of $35 for the residents. It's not a flat fee for a commercial property. And you start looking at, asking some of these commercial property owners what they pay just in CSO charges, it is through the roof. Now, to make this switch from a 17 to a 172, in my mind, doesn't give us the bang for the buck or the savings that we would normally see that would have a significant impact. I mean, we're talking about, residential is going to increase regardless if we're at the 17 or the 172. It's going to increase by 22 more, $22 more if we were, we stood at the 17. Okay, so the only thing we could potentially reduce, if we go to, if we're only talking about 17 versus the 172, is, is $22. Where we're talking potentially $231 on, on businesses. So I mean, that's, that's a significant increase. And when we start looking at where the value is, and I know we're taking the average value, but to, to my colleague in C2, it's a little misleading to look at the average. While you're taking a number of parcels, times the evaluation, it's not evenly spread amongst all the commercial properties out there. So you've got some real potential for some business owners that, that... So you've got some real potential for some business owners that, that provide significant jobs in the community to have a significant increase that is way above $200, right? So I just urge my colleagues to kind of consider that. I, for one, will be supporting us staying at 17, because I, I really don't think going to the 172 creates a, a significant relief from a residential standpoint compared to the exposure that you're going to place on commercials. So that's just my take as, as one individual. And like I've said before, and I just stated again, we're, even at this point, even at the 17, we're still below what the average tax bill is, is in New Bedford. So a very similar community in terms of fixed income, salaries, things of that nature. With that, Ayew.
Thank you. And from my understanding, New Bedford's tax rate in FY '18 was 1663, 16.63 in '18 for residential and 35.65 for commercial in '18. Their city council's also meeting tonight to vote on their tax rate as well. So, just so anybody knows. Any further questions? Councilman C. Seven, Councilor Long? Six, Councilor Long.
Just one more quick question, if we have it. On a revenue basis, as far as tax revenue, do we have it broken down as to how much is brought in on the commercial side and how much is brought in on the residential side?
Could you repeat the question, Councilor?
On the revenue side of this, when we, you do the levy, we send out the tax bills, how much is collected on the residential side and how much is collected on the commercial industrial side? We talked about an 80/20 split on the.
Yeah, but he's asking what was collected. I don't have that, Counselor. I may be able to get that from you from the collector's office, but I don't have that here tonight.
I think it's just being interested. Number two.
Thank you. My last point of information question, Mr. Mello, do you have any numbers on '18 on the number of new constructions in terms of new site development in Fall River in '18?
Building permits? You're asking about building permits?
Whether it's building permits or new site construction, so yes, similar.
Well, no, I don't have that with me. My, my assistant, he was definitely.
Sixty new homes in Fall River. Okay. Thank you. That's single-family homes, correct? Sixty. Councilman C. Four, Councilor Kilby.
Just really quick here, maybe I can help. Councilor Long, I think the question he's asking, take the total levy, and I think he said 70% is borne by residential. Does your dollar amount? Were you looking for a dollar amount?
Well, that's what's assessed. He was asking what was collected.
What was collected?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any further questions? Hearing none, thank you. One last call for any, any other proponents wishing to speak on this item. One second, Mr. Branko. Thank you. Calling other proponents, Mr. Branko.
I'm not doing this to get more than three minutes.
On the tax factor.
I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to speak and making this publicly known that this was going on at this meeting last year. Sadly, I missed the last tax factor meeting, but on the one before, I, it was myself and Danny Robelad that were out here just asking for the relief on the homeowners. I agree with you, Counselor, and C. Three, that it should be a 1.75. In my opinion, as just someone who's trying to start up a business, 1.72, that's just a symbolism. 1.75 is actually something. And I'm going to end with, you mentioned that how mu- it's going to go up $600 and everything like that. I know that if I'm in business and $600 is going to bankrupt me, I shouldn't be in business at all, at all. And I think by doing something like this, it's going to allow the stronger businesses to excel, and it possibly would get some of the weaker businesses out of the city, because when it all comes down to it, at the end of the story, you're looking at commercial versus residential, and nine times out of 10, the residential owner, they're the customers. So in picking up this tax burden, they're putting more money in their customers' pockets. And if any business is ever against this, you know what I mean? That's just the capitalistic society that we live in, because they want to try to get everything and anything they can get. So I agree with Counselor Kamara. It's up to you guys if you want to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman C. Three, Counselor Kamara.
The President had called for proponents supporting the 1.72. You're really an opponent? You're.
I'm an opponent to 1.72. I'm more opposed once, I'm sorry, I spoke out of line.
You're just a little bit too early, but I'm sure the Council President.
I was waiting for a curveball, and I swung for a fastball.
Noted, Mr. Branko. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Any other proponents calling opponents wishing to speak on this item? Last call for opponents. Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing.
So be it.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn public hearing? That would be all, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. The public hearing has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor.
Young lady, I want to speak on the tax factor. I'm not sure.
You want to speak on the taxes? Okay. As a proponent or opponent? You can go right to the table, and the public, the public hearing was closed and seconded. Is there a motion? Can we reopen a public hearing?
Just one point, point of information for, for the young woman who is there, there's also citizen input time.
She has signed up for citizen's input, I believe.
You can present your point of view as citizen input. Would you like to do that?
I mean.
Let's, let's do that.
Okay.
You signed up for citizen's input.
You can stay right there, because that's what's next.
She's not the first person to sign up. So if you could have a seat. Is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing, please? Let's, let's run this meeting. Everybody relax. Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. For the Committee on Finance, will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Joseph Kamara.
Here.
Stephen Kamara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Lullaby Lebo.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Baveras.
Here.
President Plante.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First person to sign up for citizen input is Brenda Venice, 25 Rights Way regarding the Fall River Charter. Three minutes.
Mr. President, before we do that, can we ask the administration, I'm not sure how they did the tax factor, but do you have all the different rates? So you don't have to go back?
What's the question?
They've got to get the different factors. So if we take a vote, they need the clerk to sign off on it. I just want to make sure that they have that.
Do you have the different factors for?
No. I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to speed it along while we're doing citizen input. If that's, they need to run some numbers, they might as well do it now.
Okay. Heard, Ms. Venice.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. In November 2017, the people, 7,814 people voted for our city charter. They voted for change, but it still continues that we do not have people following the charter. Till this day, our special committee, it has not been formed, or may be formed, but not, not being done. And I'm asking why? Why is it that our charter is not being followed? Why? Unfortunately, the people that were elected for the special committee, they don't understand what the special committee is used for. It's not to, the special committee is not to change the charter. The special committee is to, to take our city ordinance and make them up to the charter. And I hear special, I hear certain people saying that all the time. Unfortunately, we had over 30 meetings of the Fall River Charter, and when the attendance were very, very low. And there are people saying, well, I, I've gone to many of them. I can tell you, as the clerk, it was very poorly that a lot of our city councilors did not attend, or our mayor. So what I've decided was to use the 8.1 free petition, where I need to get 100 signatures, which I have 82 already, to force the city council to follow the charter and have this, to have this special committee formed and provide it. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to get the rest of the signatures that I've got, the 100 free petition, then we'll have them certified, and then we'll have a public hearing to find out why we don't follow the charter and why the special hearing is not done. Now, we're waiting for the mayor's pick. We have a quorum, so why not start the special meeting so that we can do our city ordinance up to the city charter? Not to change the charter, to take the city ordinance and put it up to the charter. I'd like to know why. Why is our city charter still not followed by our city councilors and our mayor? In the city coun- in the, in the city charter, it makes it very clear that if someone doesn't follow the charter, that we're to go to this, if the mayor is the person that's supposed to follow the charter. If the mayor is not following the charter, then the person that goes to the city council and the city council gives the letter to the mayor to follow the charter. The charter happens to be the city law.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Venice, just, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I just want to identify a couple of items that you stated that were incorrect. First of all, the special committee has been estab- has been established. My appointments were, were already approved. There was a resignation from one of the members. There is still a quorum possible. The mayor has already given his appointments to the special charter review committee. The issue that we are having right now, and the clerk has been working on it on a daily basis, is to get all members of the special committee that has already been established, their available time so the clerk can call a special meeting. There are some individuals that the clerk has had a difficult time getting in touch with, which have been both appointments by myself and the mayor. So for the record, Ms. Venice, their special committee has been established. The special committee has not met due to scheduling conflicts, and I believe it was only a couple months ago or a month or so ago where they, the mayor sent down his appointment so we could have it. So I just wanted to clarify that as you, as you continue.
Well, when, when will we have this meeting set, set up?
As I mentioned, the city clerk is in the process of getting everybody's availability. There are business owners, there are councilors who are trying to get their availability, so she can call a special meeting. But that committee has been established, and the clerk is working right now to get everybody's availability to call a meeting, and she's going to continue that effort tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person to sign up is Jessie, is it Free Love?
Jessica.
Jessica Franca at 293 Ocean Grove Avenue, is that in Swansea? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Three minutes.
Yep.
We are all here today for many reasons. We all have a past and a future when it comes to surviving. We can address our future by addressing our community's responsibilities and challenges. We spoke about the taxes as far as the real estate market going up to one point, I mean, 1.72 as well as 1.75. I mean, I think our community has enough damages as far as homeless, pollution, drug addiction. What we need to do is pull together so there is not so much struggling. I mean, our crime rate's out of control, there's no support system, there's not even public events anymore. I mean, you look at the rate of preteens dropping out of school and getting pregnant or the drug addiction rate, and it's, it's not good. Raising the taxes is going to make things harder for the people that are working, the middle class, that are trying to survive and just barely paying their mortgage, property taxes. I think we need to take a look at the commercial businesses that are embezzling money and take a look at the residential that are struggling to save their homes. If we raise the residential, we're going to have a market crash. We need to, I, I would aim at keeping it to 1.69 or 1.1.71 or whatever. There's many things that I would like to address as far as public events and, you know, different organizations and the establishments that are not making any progress. We, we're focused on commercial taxes, but our advertisements are not, they're not doing anything for this community. We need to take a look at what's going on in public schools and the streets and the courts, law enforcement. I mean, increasing taxes is just going to put a strain on the people as well as the community, so.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Augie Venice, 25 Rights Way regarding appointments. Three minutes.
I'm here to speak about some of the appointments before you tonight. The first one, letter A to the Board of Police. On October 9th of this year, you know, you rejected his, the same appointment to the Board of Police. I believe it was because he held another position. I've since been told when I came in here today that he resigned his second position. So now if he's appointed to the Board of Police, I guess it would only be one, one Board. The problem I have with it is that, you know, I'm friends with Mike Mayoza, and he was on the Board of Police for like three or four years, and they only met twice, maybe three times in that whole four years. And it's a paid position. I would hope that the city council can review the need for this Board of Police and eliminate it. You know, you've got three or four people being paid, they hardly ever meet, and obviously, whatever function they're supposed to be served isn't missed, because the police department's going along well without them. So, you know, you can vote for the person listed in 1A if you want, I guess, or you can deem that you don't want him in that position, but I would suggest that you seriously look at eliminating the Board of Police, because at least in my opinion, in the recent history of that Board, they, they never meet and they're getting paid to do nothing. The other one is 1C to the planning board. The charter in section 5.2 says, "All appointments, promotions of persons employed by the city shall be made on the basis of merit and fitness demonstrated by examination, past performance, or other evidence of competence and suitability. Each person employed by the city shall be specially fitted by education, training, and previous work experience." My own personal opinions, I don't think this person has any, any of the prereq visits to sit on the planning board. The planning board is a very important position in the city. His employment position is with Aramec uniforms, as a warehouse manager, is a canteen clerk, and is a deputy for the Bristol County Sheriff's Office. Clearly no planning experience there. His education's at Bristol Community College, law enforcement, self, self-defense skills, triage certified, FEMA certified, first responder certified. That's got nothing to do with planning. He attended the Deputy Academy, nothing to do with planning.
Fifteen seconds.
He is a forklift oper- certified forklift operator, and a pellet jack certified operator. All nothing would do, to do with planning. There is absolutely zero in his resume that has anything to do with planning. You know, if we keep appointing people that are unqualified, we're going to have the same fiascos. fiascos that happened with the IDA recently.
Thank you, Mr. Venice, your time is up. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, Committee on Finance, would be a loan order of $250,000 for a resiliency prep. The Academy-Westdahl feasibility study was referred on November 6th. Motion to refer to full council for action has been made by Councilor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion? Haring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it. Item number three is a communication from the mayor requesting discussion of the Purple Bag Program, or was referred back to the Committee on Finance as a whole on November 6th. Is there a motion? Is there?
President, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Counselor?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion that the Council Finance Committee move to direct the ordinance committee to eliminate the so-called pay-as-you-throw program, Purple Bag Program.
Move to direct the ordinance committee to remove the Purple Bag Program has been made, this is, a motion has been made by Councilor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Averis. Discussion on the motion. Counselor in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
Mr. President, I don't want to belabor this issue because I think that we've talked this issue till we're purple in the face, but the reality is, you know, that, that the administration had initially submitted to us a budget that did not include revenue for, from the Purple Bag Program. We, in fact, then added the Purple Bag Program back into the budget, creating some additional revenue, which the city, one thing about giving government money is that if you give it to them, they're gonna spend it, and, and the, and the government has taken this additional revenue and it's included now in this current year's budget. I think it's time for we, the council, to give some relief, again, to the beleaguered taxpayer and the renters of Fall River by eliminating this program. It's a failed program, and I want to say, though, that in spite of it being a failed program, I do see a time when this type of program, possibly with a local vendor creating the plastic bags, there are companies in Fall River that, that produce latex and plastic commodities, and if we could develop a plan that creates jobs in our, in our city while advancing the, the concept of recycling through a, a, a bag system, then I would be supportive of, of this type of pay-as-you-throw program. But this current system is a failure. The bags are of pure, of poor quality, breaking in many cases, often be, having to be returned to the, to the place in which they've been purchased. It's also been more difficult to find the bags because many merchants have backed out of it. There's been no enforcement of the system, which, again, underscores the failure of the system, and I, and I think it's time for this system to go. It's also a system that in many ways is an unjust system because it burdens those least able to pay, naming, naming in particularly the poor in the city that do find it a burden to fund this program by purchasing the purple bags. I know many people will say, you know, those same people are buying cigarettes or they're buying a beauty treatment at the beauty salon or, or other kinds of absurd notions, but the reality is, is that people make the decisions they make, and this is a burden on those least able to pay. Now, one of my colleagues had submitted a plan, a motion, if you will, to transfer the burden on enforcement and payment to property owners rather than to the tenants themselves, and that failed without even getting a second. So I do think that there is no appetite to continue this plan on the part of the public. I think the public is ready to see this plan go the way of history, and so, and I, and I did move initially that it come before the Finance Committee because I think that all nine of us should weigh in so that when the ordinance committee gets this motion, which hopefully will pass tonight, that they will have some direction from the nine of us as to where we want to go with this. So, you know, I know the, the administrative team is here to speak to this issue. I'll leave it to others to pose questions. My, my position is one of clarity. Get rid of the Purple Bag Pay-as-you-Throw Program, and let's do it by taking that step tonight, by standing up or at least sitting down and, and be counted by our votes. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I personally feel this is just nothing more than a pivot from the administration to deflect what's in front of us, but I'll go through the process and I'll ask the questions. So what has changed?
Well, Counselor, I don't know that there, there has been any change on the part of the administration. Mayor Correa continues to advocate for an elimination of the PATE program. The reason we had asked to be before you this evening, the mayor did send a letter down asking for the council's consideration, and that was done because in a very short period of time, we're gonna begin preparation of the fiscal year 2020 budget. As you know, the revenue from the purple bags does have an impact on how we develop that budget. Last year, we did go through the exercise of providing you with a budget that did not include the revenue from purple bags other than a three-month, 90-day, you know, closure period. So, we're, we're very interested in hearing from the council whether there is an appetite to continue the program. While the mayor certainly has the authority to eliminate the contract for the purple bags, he does not have the authority to change the local ordinances that require the purple bags and include the associated fee structure with that. So, we were, we were hopeful that as we begin to craft the 2020 budget, that we would know from the city council whether or not there was an agreement with the administration that the Purple Bag PATE program should be eliminated in the next fiscal year, or whether the council continues to maintain by virtue of leaving the ordinances in place, the current ordinances in place, that you want the Purple Bag Program to continue. So, we would just appreciate timely feedback so that as we begin to craft next year's budget, we are well aware of whether or not the revenues and the associated expenses should be incorporated in the budget.
So, as one counselor, and I can only speak for myself, this is where my frustration kicks in. So, in my mind, nothing has changed, right? So we talk about the failure, okay? We talked about poor quality of the bags, something that we, and we as a city, as an administration, control. We can end the contract with the vendor, get a new vendor for bags. There's not just one vendor out there, it's not sole source for trash bags, so we can do that. We haven't done that. We talk about no enforcement, but we haven't even begun to start, you know, putting the enforcement piece on the, on the actual property owners. We haven't given the support and resources to DBW to go ahead and do those enforcements. They are going out there and, and getting at least some calls that we're starting to do that. Now, let's, let's talk about the burden on the taxpayers, which is, is, it's probably kind of coincidental and appropriate that we're doing it on the fact that we're talking about the tax factor and the tax shift and all that good stuff, because how much does the bags generate in revenue? Without all this proper enforcement, 1.2 in revenue?
A little over $2 million, 2.2, 2.3 million dollars.
So, we're talking about 2.2 million dollars in revenue. Recycling costs have increased? Would everybody at the table agree that significantly increased, right? Not, not a little bit, but significantly increased?
Yes. The cost to dispose of the recyclables has increased.
China sword has come down. China is no longer taking the imports, significantly impacting where we can get away with, where we can actually dispose of this recyclable. So we all agree with that, significant in costs. We, we actually took a vote the last time to have a debt exclusion for the Durfee High School, okay? So a debt exclusion going above and beyond the 2.5%, which we were just talking about, $135 increase to the residential property owners, $231 to the commercial properties. On top of that, by the way, there's an additional cost tax increase because we did a debt exclusion for the Durfee High School, which, if we use the 2.1 as I suggested earlier, we wouldn't have had to have a debt exclusion. So that's, that's one piece. The OPEB liability, still half a billion dollars that we have for unfunded liability?
Approximately, Counselor.
Approximately, right. What's a couple of million when you're talking about a half a billion, right? So, we haven't really necessarily even begun to address that liability. Was it about two months ago, the police department was here and maybe some, some of the councilors suggested that we use some of this money, that we said that we're not gonna eliminate the trash bags, let's put it in the stabilization account within the, the reserve funds, within the operational budget? The police department was looking for radios, tasers, and the police chief sat there and said, you know, the, I forget the amount of radios we were gonna get, and the question was asked, I believe, to, my Counselor in seat four asked, is that what you need? And, and the response was, well, it's a start, but not what he needed. So we still haven't really identified that. Capital improvement projects, you know, we had Collin Center come down, we have a number of projects that are still outstanding. The capital, the Collin Center came down for the capital improvement projects just solely on the buildings, right? Have we addressed all those capital items?
We have determined that those will be done over time.
Over time.
And we're on schedule based on the ones we had anticipated.
And part of that is bonding, right?
Correct. Correct, Counselor.
Right, so additional, you know, interest on stuff, more money increases to the, to the operational budget. Roadway, infrastructure, have we completely identified? I, you know, I've, I've asked for this, the, I forget what the report's called.
Pavement report.
Thank you, pavement management report.
We do have that, Counsel, if you haven't received it, we'll get it too.
If you could, so the total dollar amount at the end of the day to repair all our roads to the standard that they should be at, what, what does that cost? It's over $20 million, right? Okay.
I'd say that's a fair assessment.
So, on all of this, this is where my frustration kicks in, that the administration's coming down because it's politically expedient to say, let's eliminate $2.1 million in revenue because a small group does not want to do trash bags, because we as a city are not properly enforcing it, and we're gonna continue to ignore this. So from my stance, moving forward either in fiscal year FY19, fiscal year FY20, absolutely not. Not until we address everything that we need to address will I now say, let's eliminate revenue. Every other community is doing this. I don't know why we continue to have these conversations, but maybe it's just me, again, Counselor in seat one, gonna say no, and I'll continue to say no because it does not make sense. We have not addressed any of this. We still have the pension liability, I mean, I can, I can go on and on and on on everything that we need to do. It is not fiscally responsible when we have significant increase just in the services that we provide for trash disposal and trash collection alone to say that we're gonna eliminate $2.1 million in revenue, because those costs continue to increase and they will continue to increase. So why are we saying no? Let's do away with $2.1 million when the city needs it? If the city was flush, if we had a triple A bond rating, we had $100 million in our stabilization account, we had zero unfunded liability for our OPEB, zero unfunded liability for our pension, then fine, okay, you want to reduce, you want, you want, you want to give money back, but at, at the same time, we're saying, let's, let's, in one hand, say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate $2.1 million, so you don't have to pay a dollar for a bag, but meanwhile, we're gonna, we're gonna hit you above and beyond for debt exclusion for a Durfee project when we could absorb some of this, at least some of the debt for a couple of years moving forward. That's just my stance as one counselor, so that's, that's my frustration, so it's an absolute no, but you can respond.
No, just, just a couple of points, Counselor, because I, I want to keep the record clear. So, I mean, I think we would all agree with you, there's, if we had more money, we could spend more money. I mean, there, there's no doubt of that, and I, but I think at some point...
Can we just clarify that statement, though? If we had more money, we could spend more money, meaning that not just to spend the money, that we, on items that we absolutely need to spend, it's, it's not, there's a difference between...
I understand, Counselor. If I could finish.
No, no, but I just want everybody in the audience and the public to understand just that statement, because there's a wish list and there's, there's what we need, and we haven't addressed what we need in terms of services and resources for our departments.
But, but we are attempting to address the public's ability to pay, and that's really what's at stake. I don't think anybody would disagree that all of the things that you listed are important and need to be addressed, but again, we do these things over time because we try to acknowledge the public's ability to pay, and I think that's where the Purple Bag Program is coming in. I'm, I'm not gonna belabor that, but I do want to make...
But I understand, just, just to that point, because I don't want to get off, I don't want to get off that point, because the, the public's ability to pay is so important because what we're saying is we're taking away $2.1 million, right? But in the very next breath, we're saying we're gonna have a brand-new Durfee High School, which I support the project itself, just not the funding mechanism, that we're gonna go to debt exclusion. So in, in one, in one aspect, we're saying, okay, we're not worried about the, the taxpayer's ability to pay because we're gonna go above the 2.5% for taxes, for a tax increase. But when we're talking about the purple bags, you know what? It, it's about their ability to pay. You can't have it both ways. You just can't.
Well, except, Counsel, that we know that when something is in the real estate tax, it has, it has an ability to be deducted from someone's taxes, they're not able to take any kind of relief from whatever they pay for purple bags. So there is a distinction. I, I know that, and I'm, I'm sure you've heard it as well, lots of people said, put it in my real estate taxes, then at least I can deduct the expense of my real estate tax when I do my taxes. So, there are those that favor putting those expenses in the real estate tax versus these additional assessments, so...
But there's no way you're gonna get the savings that, that equate to...
I'm just suggesting...
Above 2.5% on a tax.
I'm just suggesting to you that it's, it's an ability to pay, and some people would prefer one option versus another. The, the other point I wanted, I did want to stress, because I think this is important, you made several references to the fact that the enforcement activities have not been undertaken. That may have been true at one point in time, but more recently, and Mr. Perry is here and he's actually developed quite a few statistics for us, but we have actually gotten extremely aggressive with enforcement. We have sent out over 2,000 letters, and again, we'll be clear, the intent of the administration, and I'm sure the councilors as well, was never to fine for, on a punitive basis, but simply to achieve compliance.
Right.
So when the letters go out, the letters are effectively warnings, telling people that if you do not comply, then there will be consequences. So, the letters are working, there have been citations issued. Mr. Sahadi can tell you that the bag revenue is, is meeting its budgetary requirement, and I, I do want to acknowledge that DCM and its Enforcement Division has really stepped up and achieved a very strong, positive response from their efforts and has really done a good job. So I think it's important.
And I, and I appreciate that, but could you imagine how much revenue we could actually generate if we had 80% compliance on the bags? We would talk, we would be talking a lot more than $2.1 million.
I actually think, what is the compliance rate, Mr. Perry?
We did a audit this past summer, and our actual compliance rate is about 92%.
No way, no way.
This was an audit done...
Absolutely not.
Across the board, Counselor, independent of my department.
Mr. Perry, I, I, I respect you.
That's fine.
That is absolutely 90%.
You're entitled to your opinion, Counselor.
Well, and again, what they did was they actually followed truck by truck. They went down behind them or ahead of them in some cases, they actually looked to see where the compliance was, so it, it has improved dramatically.
I, I don't, I don't disagree, listen, I don't, I don't disagree with the efforts and I applaud the efforts, I really do, because they have drastically increased, but we, we heard that we were 80% like two or three years ago. I mean, there is, listen, you do an eyeball test, and, and, and I get it's gonna be very difficult to, especially when you get to the southern. The north end might be a completely different situation when you got a lot more single-family homes. The multifamily homes, it just, well, I don't see, and I don't mean any disrespect, but I mean...
No, I understand, Counsel.
90%.
If you wouldn't mind, no, I understand. The eyeball test, I've heard that statement quite a bit over the years. I know for a fact that my, my folks, myself, we're out there, we're in the public, we're actually lifting these lids, we're looking in these totes, we're seeing what's there. I don't think I can take an actual assessment by anybody that's just driving up this particular street. I've seen that scenario, I've heard that scenario, you know, you drive up the street and you don't see any purple bags. These numbers were painfully acquired through the audit that we had working with Way Zero and with EZ. Now, before anybody makes the statement that, well, of course, it's in their best interest to have high compliance rates. Well, if you look at our revenue numbers and you look at our, our bag sales, I mean, what we're shooting for, we're getting, and those were based on not a 60% compliance rate.
So what's 100%?
I know, I do know, one last point, Counsel, I do know that there are many, many more people complying with the ordinance, with the Purple Bag Program than there are against.
Okay.
I can say that for a fact.
So, in, in terms of tonnage that we're dumping, so what would 100% compliance be? You know the tonnage that we dump, you, you should know what per bag, how much tonnage goes in a bag, I mean, that's how you get the cost because you're not supposed to be making any additional revenue, so it's, what you charge to the, to consumer is exactly what the cost is for that amount of tonnage in that bag. I mean, it's obviously not tonnage in the bag, but whatever the weight is there. So what's, what's 100%? How much would that generate in revenue?
I don't have that number. I don't have that number, councillor, I wasn't expecting that question.
So the easy way to be was, how much tonnage do we have multiplied by whatever the cost is to dispose of that, that would be exactly what you'd, because you should be cost neutral? So you should be generating enough revenue to offset the cost associated with it?
No, councillor, we're not cost neutral, the bags are not covering the full cost of...
Well, they sure, that's the intent of the page.
Again, but there's been no intent in trying to increase the cost of the bags, but that's what would have to happen.
Okay, so what is, but what is the cost of...
We would have to get you the exact numbers, councillor, but I can assure you that the bags are in no way...
It's more than $2.1 million.
Covering all of the costs of...
It's got to be, it's got to be at least like a $3, $4 million for trash, right? I mean, just this tonnage.
No, absolutely. It doesn't cover the cost for our disposal, but we've also seen, as you said, some significant increases in our disposal costs over the years, so, I mean, that continues to rise, and the bag program has stayed at the rate that we set it at when we originally put it in place, so that plays a factor in it as well.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, in seat four, councillor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Sean Keddie is always a tough act to follow with his expertise, but, so a lot of the things he stated, I stated, but first of all, what triggered the first question I have, we have a 97 percent compliance rate?
92, councillor.
92 percent compliance rate with a program, now you're asking us to consider getting rid of the program halfway, and having discussion halfway through the municipal budget. It just doesn't make any sense to me, and I agree with councillor in seat one, it's a complete diversionary tactic on a part of the mayor to take away attention from what he's going through. Absolutely, and I won't play any part of it. I think it's fiscally irresponsible for him even to have this before us again. We talked about this issue ad nauseam over budget time. My friend, councillor Joseph Cameron, in seat two, even stated, hey, let's stop talking about these bags, people are going to stop buying them. So here we are again, halfway through, in all the years I've been an elected official, I've never ever experienced an administration opening up a budget halfway through the fiscal year, never.
Councillor, let me just clarify, if there was any confusion, we are in no way suggesting that we are going to do anything to impact the current fiscal year '19 budget. Please, may I finish?
Councillor in seat four.
This is...
I still have the floor.
Mr. President, point of order.
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, no, 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 councillor in seat four has the floor right now.
I have a matter, Mr. President.
What's your point of order?
My point of order is that the people at the table are being asked questions, they were repeatedly interrupted by my colleague in seat one, now they're being interrupted by my colleague in seat four.
There was no interruption, so...
I would ask the decorum, I would ask the decorum that the people be given an opportunity to speak.
Councillor, thank you, thank you, councillor.
This is my point of order.
Thank you, councillor, councillor in seat four.
Respect for Stephen Kamara.
Councillor in seat four has the floor.
Make your comment, please, Kathy.
Point of clarification, at no point was I interrupting, we were having a back-and-forth conversation.
And it was a healthy debate.
Conversation, by the way, is two-way.
Yes.
Right, so I allow the administration to speak, I speak, so I, you know, I...
There was a very healthy debate there.
Every time councillor in seat three has an issue with anything that we say, it becomes a decorum issue. Quite frankly, I'm tired of it, there's no decorum issues, that's my clarification.
Thank you, and there was a very healthy debate between councillor in seat one and city administrator Viveras. Councillor in seat four, you have the floor, you can ask your questions.
Sorry if I get a little too passionate, but I've been around a long time, and I see it for what it is. I mean, the appropriate time to talk, speaking about this issue, is during budget time, when you're spending your time, majority of your time, Kathy, Mr. Sahadi and Mr. Viveras, in framing a responsible budget that may eliminate the bags. I agree with a lot of things that councillor Stephen Kamara said in seat three, but I just find this, it just strikes me, going back to the charter and the vote we took to have the mayor step down, it just, and I'll suggest, his ability to perform his duties of mayor have been tainted as a result of the criminal indictment, and it's affected his ability to do the job in an efficient manner, and that's what this is all about. Call a spade a spade, as my councillor, my friend councillor in seat one stated, that's why we shouldn't even be talking about this issue. So, go ahead, I yield.
May I respond?
Mrs. Viveras?
Yeah, thank you. As I started to say, we are not here this evening to in any way suggest that we are going to amend the current fiscal year '19 budget, that we are, you're correct, approximately halfway through, but in a matter of a few short weeks, and Mrs. Sahadi is already getting ready, we are in the process of developing the fiscal year 2020 budget. That's why we're here, and I would just respectfully suggest, sir, that...
May I interrupt, you hear it because the mayor says...
No, we're interrupting, Mr. President.
Councillor, councillor.
I'm trying to respond.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Viveras.
Thank you. What I'm suggesting to you is, we are here to get a sentiment of the council. One of your colleagues is planning on making a motion, he received a second, I believe you're on discussion regarding the motion.
That's correct.
All we need is a vote. If the council votes this evening with response to your colleague in seat three's motion, not to send it to ordinance, not to eliminate the ordinance provisions...
I know my role, okay?
Councillor, please, may I, may I finish?
Well, I know my role.
I'm not suggesting you don't know your role.
Forgive me if I'm passionate about my job.
What I am, well, and I'm passionate as well, but I'm trying very hard to be respectful.
Not as much as you used to be when you were sitting in seat...
I waited my turn, councillor. All I'm suggesting to you is, at some point, I'm assuming, there is going to be a vote. If the vote is not to refer to ordinance, not to make the changes, then we will interpret that to mean that the council is not prepared to eliminate the program, and we will begin to craft a budget with that knowledge in hand. However, should that vote be taken to send it to the ordinance committee indicating a willingness to eliminate the program, then we will take an alternate course. We just need your feedback, we're just asking for your input, and we believe it's timely. You may believe it's for all sorts of ulterior motives and all sorts of ulterior intents, I'm suggesting to you, and I am saying to you, with Mrs. Sahadi, the Director of Financial Services standing right, sitting right before me, we are preparing to do the fiscal 2020 budget. It's a very long and arduous process, and we just want your input, we just want your feedback, you'll take it tonight, and we will live with whatever information we get.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, and I would suggest to you once again, that the appropriate time for you to look for our input is when you have a budget to present to the city council. That's the appropriate time, not a couple of months before a recall election, where there may be another mayor, he or she may take a different course in whether to eliminate the purple bags or not. That's where I'm coming from. It's totally premature, Mr. Viveras, to be discussing this issue again. I yield.
May I respond? Councillor, I would just reiterate, we send the directives out to our department heads, we tell them what kinds of budget target goals they need to establish, and in order to do that, we need to know what the anticipated revenues will be available to the city. We need this information now. You may challenge that, you may disagree with that, I'm suggesting to you that it's not appropriate to wait until we're a month away from delivering you the budget, it's far more efficient for us to have that input now, so that January 2nd, 3rd, when we send the directive out to our department heads and give them the benchmarks that we need for the fiscal 2020 budget, we know what the likely revenues are going to be that are available to them. That's all we're asking.
Thank you, councillor in seat five, councillor Vice President LeBeau.
Just to continue with that conversation, the money from, the money from the bags is right now sitting in an account, we're not using it for anything.
Councillor, the way it really works is the revenue was coming in as general fund revenue, and when you passed your budget, you passed an account within the budget called the reserve fund. That particular account has not been touched since you passed the budget. Now, when we initially prepared the budget, it included $475,000 of bag revenue and no cost of the bags, because we assumed that the runoff inventory was going to be the cost of the bags and we would utilize those. When we amended the budget, if you will, or you approved the budget, we included the $2.3 million of revenue, we also included in the budget $400,000 for the cost of the bags, and we put $1 million, $1 million in this reserve fund, and we have not touched that reserve fund. It has been my intention, as we have had our administrative meetings, is that if we can not touch that reserve fund during the course of the year, we will have additional monies available for snow removal relief come the end of next fiscal year. So I understand what councillor in seat one is saying with regard to some of the needs of some of the departments, but when we crafted the budget originally, those departments did not come forward with those types of needs, and we know we finish each fiscal year with some snow deficits that have to be covered, and every year that we use zero-based budgeting, the tighter and tighter the bottom line becomes in terms of the turnbacks. So departments are having less and less way of turnback, so if we can save this money, if you will, or save this account, we would be coming to you next June with a transfer from this reserve fund to cover snow and ice deficits. That's my plan.
So there is still additional cost besides what councillor in seat one said that we need, it's a need to cover all of those costs, and if a department head is coming to us and saying that they need something like the chief did, and we're not able to take it from this, I have an issue with any department going without a need. That's one thing. As far as the timing of this, I mean, with everything that's going on, I don't necessarily agree with the timing of this either, I can see this spinning off into, you know, it's another mayor versus council on the next interview, but we haven't been through, we've only been through the first quarter. I would appreciate going through even the second or third quarter and seeing where we're at before we made any kind of decisions, that's where I'm coming from, and as far as councillor in seat one mentioned, one of the biggest complaints is the quality of the bags. Have we looked into a different provider if we were to continue this program?
Actually, councillor, we did speak to Way Zero about that, and they did improve the quality of the bag, they did give us a higher-milled bag, Mr. Perry.
That's correct, we did address that with them, I'm sorry, councillor.
When did those bags roll out?
That was this summer, I'd say maybe July, possibly.
It'd even been a little later than that.
Might have been a little later.
In stores and after?
Correct.
So late summer, early fall, we should be...
Yeah, I would think, and of course, some of the stores with larger inventory would use up the old bags before, so I, I mean, I would think at this point that all of the new bags are in fact within the consumers' hands, I think we've probably eliminated all of the older bags, but they did in fact give us a stronger-milled bag, we did feel it, you could tell.
Can I get a point of clarification, councillor in seat one? Just along those lines, Way Zero was here and they said, I believe it was before this council, that they would actually give, if a bag ripped, that they would give a bag...
That is, that is correct, councillor.
They still have that?
They stand behind that, there have been several residents when the...
They only about 100, so...
The rash, well, they're willing to replace those, I know that for a fact. There were two complaints that were prevalent, one was that the color of the bags wasn't consistent, and the other complaint was that the quality of them was too thin. We felt as though the quality of the bag, the thickness of the millimeter was more important to address, so we went with that, and it's all based on the type of recycled product they used to produce the bag. So that's where the color comes in, so we felt that the strength of the bag was more important, and that's what we had them address. And they will stand behind their guarantee, if any resident has a problem, they can email them and they'll get a roll of bags sent back.
So while we're on this, who do they email? Because I have complaints all the time about the quality of the bags, hopefully that's going to lessen if, as the new ones roll out, but who exactly?
Sure, they email Way Zero directly, and I don't have that email directly in front of me, but I will get that to all of you tomorrow in case you get any other constituent complaints, I'll email everybody with that email address.
Could I just ask for the president, can we, can have the clerk put that on the city council's page?
The email.
Thank you.
And do they need to do anything, do they need to turn in the ripped bag?
No, they just need to file the complaint through email, and I'm sure at some point they'll have to have a discussion with somebody at Way Zero, but it's not a forensic investigation, I bought a bag, it ripped, and they'll replace it, and that's from them to me, and I feel that they will stand behind that.
And as far as the audit, I can say that I have seen the compliance, I'm not sure it's at 92 percent, I want to ask you about the audit, but I have seen the enforcement, my own recycling barrel got a ticket, and I was actually happy to see that, got a warning because there was something in there that shouldn't have been.
Correct.
So I was actually happy to see that. What did the, how long did the audit last? Did it go through every route?
It went through every route.
Once, twice?
Every route each day for a straight week. Way Zero came down with their folks, and each group from Way Zero had some day help that they hired locally, and they followed each truck, and each day they put a percentage on the compliance, Monday through Friday, some days obviously better than others, depending on the demographic and where you are in the city. Our best day by far was Friday, 5.5 percent non-compliant, our worst day was Tuesday, 10.4 percent. When you average it all out, and it's all based on 6,000 stops a day those percentages are based on, okay? When you average it out across the five days, the end result was 7.7 percent. So I'm actually shaving 0.3 percent of my compliance percentage, but councillor, honestly, you know, there'll be people who argue that point, there'll be people who support it. Let's just say in every estimate, you give yourself a plus or minus percentage that you can be off, correct? Let's double that, let's double that percentage and say that we're not at seven or eight, we're at 15 percent non-compliance, we're still at 85 percent compliance, and there are some steps that we still need to take as a compliance department to correct that, but we're working in that direction.
I don't have a, you know, I've said this, I don't have a problem with the bags, we have to buy trash bags, every other community has some type of a program like this, I have a problem still with the way that it was rolled out way back when it started, there was an ordinance put in place way back when it started, I think for almost a year, so people got very different reactions to the program, very different opinions on whether they needed to comply with it or not. It seems like we're heading in a better direction with it, where our compliance rate is up, and nobody knew that anybody was doing this audit, correct?
No, no. It wasn't publicly made so that there wouldn't be any skews in the numbers, we want it to be an actual audit and present factual numbers.
So, I mean, we can send it to ordinance for discussion, which is what would happen, I'm not sure that sending it to ordinance, you know, is really tying our hands and agreeing to anything, I would like to see how the second and third quarter reviews go.
So, councillor...
You have a question?
No, just a comment to make, so we are starting the fiscal 20 budget as we speak, we've actually already started the template, today we had a department head meeting, and I made a comment with regard to all of the departments starting to put together their needs, so waiting till the second and the third quarter is getting really late in terms of what our revenue needs. Now, the second quarter is, the reports are due, the second meeting in January, and that's certainly a sufficient time, but the third quarter, the budget is pretty much put together by the second meeting in the April meeting, yeah, the second meeting in April, so the third quarter is significantly late, and as Mrs. Vivera said, the idea really is to determine what the council wants to do with the program. If they want to continue the program, then I'm going to obviously include in the revenue projections the revenue from the program itself, if it appears that the council is on the, in the direction of removing the program completely, then I need to keep that in mind today when I start rolling out the departments, because as you know, we've got some fixed costs that are fixed cost, and then we've got some departments that are larger than others, and if we need to look at those departments closer with regard to their needs, we need to determine whether or not we can cover that $2 million of revenue. The other thought that we have, and I think I've mentioned it to a couple of the councillors that have attended the briefings, but there are other sources of revenue, not necessarily a lot of revenue, but there's the revenue from the billboards that are out there being discussed. If that is a source of revenue that is going to be something that the council's going to be interested in, then I can take that information and include it in the fiscal 20 budget. Other things like parking meter fees, we've talked about them in terms of the increase in the fees, no one wanted to necessarily increase the fees, but putting parking meters in new locations. On the agenda this evening is also the parking garages, so the parking garages, I have a pro forma that we've worked on together that would look like the parking garages would give us a source of revenue within the general fund as well. as well. So, there are a lot of moving parts. So, the budget is started. You know, we're working on, I work on a five-year plan of the budget, kind of on a regular basis, and I meet with Mrs. Viveras, and we talk about what other revenue sources we may have, and also what our additional costs are going to be. Because as Counselor in Seat One pointed out, we're going to have the additional cost of the debt service on the high school, and that will be coming sooner than later. We'll be borrowing in this coming February for short-term money to cover the city's share of the construction that's being, that's going on right now.
Okay. Well, if you're asking us to give you our opinion tonight, I would be voting to keep it in, because I want more information to see where we're at going forward with the budget year that we're in right now.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in Seat Six, Counselor Long.
There we go again, I guess. If this is to move forward, then I would request prior to this moving forward that we take the enforcement piece that was tabled in this council and send that to ordinance along with this so that we can talk about both. It amazes me, the discussion, and when we say we had a 92 percent compliance rate, some of my colleagues laugh at that, and, you know, whether you want to or not, I think probably 85 is probably closer to. But to even talk about this and not have a legitimate conversation about the enforcement, I'll ask you a question. How many fines, how many tickets have been issued, and what have you collected in enforcement?
For pay-as-you-throw, 432 citations have been issued. That's for pay-as-you-throw and recycling. We've collected $7,810 in fiscal '19.
So, how many is that? Seven thousand, how many tickets is that?
That's four, I'd say 400 tickets or so.
So, you've collected...
We've issued over 2,000 letters warning residents that if we go back to their property and they are still noncompliant, whether it be pay-as-you-throw or recycling, that they will be issued a citation.
How, do you know, basically, just offhand, I don't need direct numbers, but how much of it is the enforcement of recycling over purple bags?
For the collection of the, 7,800. For that, I'd say that'd probably be 50/50 split, I would say.
So, basically, on the purple bag enforcement, it's still not fully implemented, if you will?
No, I think I know what you're driving at, Counselor, and yes, there are steps that could be taken to make it easier for us to make the compliance, but I also understand that's a sensitive topic, so...
Well, I don't care if it's sensitive. I mean, if you're talking about compliance ratios, and we're just talking about our TIF, not our TIF, but our tax factor, and we're talking about 80 percent of the taxes are going on the residential side, if we look at that and we look at the number of houses, what is the ratio of multifamilies versus single families?
Many more multifamilies, Counselor.
Many more multifamilies. And when you find the infractions, are they coming from the single families or from the multifamily?
Majority from the multis, a vast majority.
All right, so when you find the fine on a multi, how do you find the person who generated the trash?
I've stated it before, it makes our job extremely difficult to try to identify the generator of the trash when you have to find out which tenant did it. We've come a long way with homeowners of multis complying with helping us identify that, but it makes it very tough for us to stick when we try to get the collection.
And this is my point, and I don't, it's the, where the council wants to go, I'm not sure that I want to have this discussion tonight over purple bags, but I know, going forward, if we don't have a legitimate enforceable ordinance on our property owners, because that's where it goes. I mean, if you, as a single-family resident, if I don't comply, I get the, I get the fine, I got to pay it. It is what it is. It doesn't matter whether my kids put the bag out or somebody else put the bag out, I still got to pay it, and I get that. And, but, the problem with this is, is we don't want to talk about the enforcement. Then we talk about the compliance rate, we laugh at the compliance rate, but then we say we want to keep the revenue. Look, you can't have your cake and eat it too. It's either all-in or all-out. Put the enforcement in place, I'll support the bags. We don't have the enforcement in place, kick the bags out. But I'm going to tell you something, whether we have the bags in or the bags out, a year, two years, three years down the road, we're going to have a trash conversation again because it's not going away, the cost is going up, and we're going to have to pay for it somehow. And we're not going to be able to pay for it within our budgets, because it's going to get more and more and more expensive. So, I mean, we need to make that decision as to what we want to do. We need to be courageous in our efforts, but we can talk about these purple bags now, we can talk about them later, we can get rid of them, we can keep them, but this trash situation is not going away. It's a national crisis, national issue. When you look at our recycling, it's the same thing. Biggest bill of goods ever sold to you, to this community and every other community, we were going to make money on our recycling. Oh, boy, we were going to make a lot of money on our recycling. That lasted about six months, and the whole thing flipped on us, and now it's costing us five times the amount, maybe even 10 times the amount, to get rid of our recycling. It's probably a bigger issue than the purple bags. So, it's a, it's a national crisis, it's going to continue, but I think if we're going to move forward on these purple bags, we have to talk about legitimate enforcement. And if we're not going to talk about legitimate enforcement, then let's just get rid of the whole program. It doesn't matter, I think it's a little premature to be having that discussion. But before this goes anywhere tonight, I would say we lift the other resolution off the table tonight, and if you're going to send something back down to ordinance, send it both back to ordinance, and we'll have a discussion back there, and we'll see how that all goes. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in Seat Seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. Many years ago, we talked about the incinerator and improving it, and whatever we could do and take everybody's trash regional, and all well and good, but it kind of fell on deaf ears, and people didn't like the smoke, didn't like, so now we're in predicament. If we get rid of the purple bags, we lose 2.2 million? Is that what we're talking about?
The net, the net loss in revenue was about $2 million, because we have the cost of the bags.
You have plans, if we get rid of the bags, to try to recoup that 2-point-whatever million?
There are other things on the table here. The billboards are one, the parking meters are another. We're always looking at additional sources of revenue to supplement the budget.
Okay, now, let's say that some of you can walk me through this. Purple bags are gone, and we've got the revenue we're going to try to recoup. Now, what are the people of Far River going to do? They're supposed to recycle? What are the...
Well, absolutely, still have to recycle, Counselor.
Yes, Counselor.
Okay, so, they're going to use their bins?
Yes.
And recycle? And the trucks are going to pick up the recyclable? So, the only thing they're doing, they're not using bags?
That's correct, Counselor, yeah. You're eliminating the purchase of the bag, but they're still going to have to separate their recyclables from their regular trash or the solid waste.
And...
And we will still need enforcement, again, the recyclables have to be cleaned and acceptable.
And do we have an idea of, to get rid of the bags, how would that, that would work?
With the recycling, Counselor?
Yeah.
You'll see a significant drop in recycling. When people don't have to pay for bags, they will tend to not recycle as much as they would have normally. We saw a significant increase in our recycling numbers when the bags were instituted. So, that is a byproduct of the discussion.
Were you around when you had the little blue buckets?
Absolutely. Picked them up myself on the truck, Counselor.
Doesn't work out either?
And, no, that was in its infancy. The city was at that point, I think, only 6 percent covered with recycling. We only had 6 percent of the city with those bins, the small totes. Sorry, sir? It was a pilot program that grew, and we continued to try to expand it, but not until former Mayor Correa instituted the carts, did we see that significant increase.
I want to add to, Counselor, because actually, Mr. Perry and I have had this conversation before, but if you eliminate the bags, you may be less inclined to get people to put non-recyclables in the recycle bin, because right now, it's more important for them to save on the cost of the bags. So, they're putting things in the recycle bin that maybe should not be in the recycle bin, but they're putting them there, and so we're getting, so it's kind of an interesting dynamic. You eliminate the bag, you might actually get a better quality of recyclable...
But less volume.
Right. Less volume, but a better quality.
Correct.
So...
You know, we as councilors in the administration, past administration, and we go out, we spend millions of dollars on carts, beautiful carts, that work good, keeps the rodents out, and you might think people would say, well, look, we got to comply, we got to comply. And it gets to the point where you're not doing it, so now we get the purple bags, and nobody wants them, or they don't want to pay for it. So, you know, it puts us in a bind, of course. Do we keep them? Do we get rid of them? Is it a political move? Not a political move? I understand your plight, that you have to make the budget, and you need some kind of idea of what we're going to do as councilors, whether or not we keep the bags or not. I get a lot of people don't like the bags, they don't like the price, and, you know, you know, it's a tough situation, what do we do? And now, you take the 2.2 million on aside, you never put it for anything, so it's like, well, we took the money, put it on aside. So, if we get the purple bags again, the money we generate is going where? For the next budget? In the same little pocket? You know what I mean? You got that money saved up now, right?
Yes, Counselor, we have not spent the reserve fund money as of today. In the fiscal '20 budget, it will depend on what our other needs are. As Counselors in Seat One said, we may use some of that money to purchase equipment rather than going out for bonding.
Well, I got to think about this, and, you know, it's a tough situation that we're in, and people out there really don't like the bags. But again, if we get rid of the bags, they're going to recycle less. So, we're caught, it's up to others on the side. What we want to do as soon as we can, so you can guys make a budget that is going to include the bags or not include the bags, so you don't have to make two budgets again. Was that a problem last time?
Well, it is, Counselor. I mean, we go through a lot of effort to come up with a balanced budget, and we try to establish what the total revenues are going to be and then provide directives. And as your colleague in Seat Six mentioned, again, there's, there are other elements that might surround that decision, so it's going to take time. It's going to go to ordinance committee, there's going to be a conversation about other related topics such as enforcement, and then it's going to come back to full council. So, again, we think it's timely. By the time the council finishes its deliberation, you only have one more, one more, you have the two meetings in December, one is already next week, it's going to be January. And so, we really need that feedback from you.
All right, well, the only thing I can do is go to chip, make another novena, that everything works out all right. And that's it. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor in Seat Eight, Counselor Viveras.
Thank you. My thoughts on this, this issue haven't changed since the, since the last time I happened to agree on, with Counselor in Seat Three on this one. How many years has this program been in place?
Since 2015.
Since 2015. So, we're in three, three years, going on four years, this program going? I don't know many places, and I'm not just talking cities or towns, businesses, they have a program in place, and I think a safe statement to say is that the program hasn't worked that well, there's a lot of things to work on, that a program would continue. And I understand that it's a way to generate money for the city, I get that, okay? We just had a conversation talking about, no matter how we slice it, the tax, with the tax levy, taxes are going to go up. Our water bills have gone up, they're going to continue to go up. Like Counselor in Seat One, we have a high school that we have to pay for. But I see this as an opportunity to take some burden off of the residents, right? We're constantly going to the taxpayer to pay for a lot of the needs that we have in the city. And I think this is an opportunity to go to a program, something that we have that's not working very well, and to take something off the residents, right? We, you mentioned some potential revenues come to the city, the parking garages, billboards, marijuana dispensaries. Do you have an idea of what the revenues we would generate from those?
We have some estimates, Counselor, on the billboards currently. The billboards that have been presented are primarily for water and sewer, are on property that's water and sewer, so that revenue would really go to the water and sewer departments. The state has some estimates on the marijuana, both the recreational as well as the medical on the recreational. I would assume that if we can meet some of the numbers that the state is estimating, we'll see approximately $100,000 in excise. As far as the garages go, again, we've done some estimates based on what we know in terms of the current usage of both Pearl Street and Third Street to include the flat surfaces. We will see approximately a quarter of a million dollars of net income from those two garages after we do some cosmetic repairs. That does not include any infrastructure repairs that are needed on Third Street. We're hoping to get some grants in order to do that. If we market both garages differently than they're currently being marketed, there are a number of vacant spaces, so we could potentially have net income close to $400,000 on the two garages themselves. So, there are some sources of revenue that will help subsidize, if you will, the general fund budget. At this particular point, just to go back to a comment that you made, the revenue from the program from 2015 through 2018, and then to include 2019's estimate, has been pretty much the same. The first year, the sales were the highest, they were 2.4 million, but they've been around 2.3 million each of the other years. So, there hasn't been, in terms of the failure of the program, the program's been very consistent since 2015 in terms of revenue within the general fund.
And I guess my point behind that, I guess, one of my problems with the program is that there are residents in the city paying for the service, and there are others who are not. And to me, that's not, that's a program that doesn't work. And so, that's my point.
I understand.
Do we have any idea what the billboards might? I know you said there was some on the water, but...
Actually, Counselor, we have three applications before the state, we're waiting for their decision, so we should be receiving that, we're hoping, within a few weeks. Depending upon how those decisions are made, we do have additional billboards that we'll be submitting. As Mrs. Sahadi mentioned, two of the three are on water department property. So, those revenues will help to offset the costs in those departments, the enterprise accounts, and may help us to affect the increases that may need to come on the water rates in particular. However, based on how the state responds to those first three applications, we have additional sites upwards of at least another five sites that we could submit to them, and many of those are on municipal property, so those would go to affect the general fund budget. So, we're hoping for a read from the state within the next couple of weeks on the ones we've submitted, and that will determine our course of action on the remainder of the billboard. So, right now, we would have potentially one billboard that would be adding to the general fund, but that number could swell to as more as five or six additional, depending upon how we do with the ones we've submitted. So, there's still some flexibility, but we do hope to get some sort of a read on that within the next month or two, so that, again, for budgetary purposes, we can start to make some reasonable expectations. However, I would add, and I think this was the reason Mrs. Sahadi referenced it as well, even once the state makes their approval, it has to come back, it has to go through a public procurement process to select the vendor who would erect the billboards and sell the advertising, and then the city council has to support the lease of the land to the vendor. So, the council will be well-informed and closely involved in that whole process, and again, we're hoping as early as the first quarter of '19.
I yield.
Counselor in Seat Two, Counselor Joseph Cana.
Thank you. I'm, I don't know, this is like, the more we talk trash, the crazier it gets. And I'll tell you, if you ever play sports, the worst people to play against are the trash talkers. They really are. I can remember in 1994, '95, and I show my colleague to my left, it's Seat Three, remember, former city councilman, God rest his soul, Jack Maderis was here, talking about trash and the collection of trash, should the bins, and I think you might have been on the council back then, too. So, people talk about trash all the time, and it's, it's, has to be addressed, has to be concerned, but as my colleague in Seat Four said earlier, when he mentioned that every time I said we talk about trash, the revenues go down. And that's because since the inception of this program, there are counselors that would state publicly that it's illegal, you cannot collect the trash, people shouldn't be doing it because it's not right, the council didn't have an ordinance in place, council didn't vote for it, et cetera, et cetera. So of course, what would the residents do? Stop buying bags. And then they would find out every other meeting that we're not issuing any fines. So what would they do? Stop buying bags. Because they knew, now that we're finally getting aggressive, John, I give you a lot of credit, you and your department, the people that put this together, give you a lot of credit.
Appreciate that, Counsel, and I'm sure they do as well. Thank you.
And working hard and making this known that we're gonna be out there checking compliance, sending out 2,000 letters. I don't think any administration's ever sent out that many letters or that many fines or ever. And I think that's the problem that we've had from day one, is that the people that put this program together told us, it's all about the compliance from day one. If you don't get aggressive and making sure that people comply, they will choose, many of them, not to comply. Now, I do feel bad for many people who do struggle to go out there and, and purchase these bags, because depending on the situation, how many children you have, and how much recycling you can and cannot do, it can get costly. I agree with that. And especially the elderly people who are out there, that, and I've gotten calls, how, how many stores, are there less stores carrying bags now or before? Who determines who gets to carry them, who doesn't get to carry them? Because I'll tell you this, when an elderly person calls me up and says, "I went to two stores because I didn't have the bags, tomorrow my trash is gonna go out, I'm not gonna comply, I pray I don't get a ticket, I pray I don't get a tag, if I do, I'm gonna call you," they call me ahead of time, and I says, "If that happens, let me know." Are there more and more stores dropping the program? Can they drop the program? Because there's a lot of people talking about that.
They can drop the program if they'd like to. That's their prerogative. We haven't had a lot of defections from the program as far as store bases, getting rid of the bags. We did have another problem right around the same period, we did with the quality of the bags, and that was supply and demand at the stores. At that same meeting, we addressed that problem with Way Zero as well, and I think Mr. Viveras will actually remember, we, we discussed maybe even increasing the number of stores. Maybe there are some pockets in the city with stores that don't carry them, because not everybody does.
Right.
So there might be some pockets where people are going to this particular store, and they don't have them, they have to travel, you know, a bit of a ways to get to them. But we haven't had a lot of defections. I believe we have somewhere upwards of 130 stores that do carry them. So, I mean, the-
Is that on the website as well, stores that do participate?
Uh, I believe it would be on our DCM website. I believe when we updated the website, that was part of it that I went over with Dawn. If it isn't, I'll make sure that that does get on there. That is something I feel is important. But there have been supply and demand problems in the past. Again, that was late, late summer, early fall. We addressed that, and, and the complaints in my department, and, and that's where a lot of them were coming, I was getting them on a daily, the people having a hard time. Addressed it immediately with Way Zero, and, and the problem was corrected. But Way Zero deals directly with the stores. As an administration or a city, we do not have that control over the store and Way Zero and what their relationship is. So I feel you'd probably have the business owners coming to you more so if they felt there was a serious problem.
Well, I mean, the person I spoke to, when they went to the store, I asked them what store it was, I went there the day after, and they still didn't have the bags. And then I asked, "When will you have them?" And they had no idea.
Yeah.
They're like, "We don't know, we get them, and we get them, and we don't know when they're gonna come, and sometimes at the right size." So I think that we have to do a better job and make sure that Way Zero has stores fully loaded with plenty of bags, all different sizes, because that's something that, you know, I, I feel bad for the person, especially when it's wintertime and the weather's not great, and they get stocked at 4:30, and now people are being asked to go to a store and then another store and look for these bags, and it's just getting difficult. So if we're gonna make people do this program, then we should make it as easy as possible for them to participate, not make it challenging for them.
Agreed.
That's what makes it even more-
Uh, and I just want to put it out there, I'm just not sure if people are aware, we do have the bags available here at my office on the fifth floor, room 511.
We do.
So if any of the citizens come in to pay their tax bill, or, or just for whatever reason they may need to be here, they can pick up some bags at our, our location. We always have them here. It'd be my worst nightmare to not have.
I don't mean to cause havoc, but is there any reason why you can't have them on the second floor? Either the clerk's office, and maybe Al's not too happy right now, but the treasurer's office, because you know that's where people go.
Counsel, I'll, I'll defend them and say that, you know what, yeah, I'm in the business of-
Trying to make it easier for people.
I'm in the business of trash. I think when, whenever you start spreading that to other departments, they're gonna start feeling some of that residual resentment possibly, and I, I think we should refine that just to my office, so we can handle it where we're at.
All right. I just think maybe we should publicize that if people do, because I've never, I didn't know.
Yep.
The city won't sold them or kept them here, so maybe we should put up some signs saying trash bags, fifth floor.
Absolutely.
This way they'll make sure we won't send them to the clerk's office.
Yep, absolutely. I'll have Dawn put that on the website tomorrow.
But yeah, so, I mean, listen, I, I think it's great that we're at that type of compliance, or whether it's even a little below that, that's still a lot better than we've done in the past, and I think that what we need to stop doing is stop talking trash and stop saying that it's illegal. And I can remember once it happened where I asked someone for trash bags myself, and they said, "You don't need to buy them, because the city's getting rid of them pretty soon." Because they were here, and we're gonna get rid of them, we're gonna get rid of them. And that was all part of the problem. Every time this council brings up trash and paper, paper bags, sales go down, because people says, "I saw the meeting, they're gonna get rid of them soon, so why bother?" They don't even check on them, no one's paying the fines. Worst comes to worst, you'll get a warning, don't worry about it. And that was happening quite a bit. So it wasn't fair to the people that have been complying from day one, and there's many people, to the credit of people in this community, there are many, many people that have been complying from day one.
Agreed.
So it's, it's a good thing, there is probably, as one homeowner told me, there are some people in every community that will never comply with not just this law or rule, but any law rule, that's the way it is, and we shouldn't ruin something. But, Mr. Sahadi, I think that it's crucial also that if we have additional revenue, I don't know what the projections were, but if there can be a way to eliminate this program, and maybe you can tell us where additional revenue's coming into, whether it's the percentages we're gonna get from the marijuana facilities, that we're gonna get the percentages of their business, and the billboards and other areas, or things that are coming offline that we can, it'll help us determine that we don't need them. I voted to get rid of the bags from day one. I did never support the program or the bags, because of all the issues that people were having with them, and because it wasn't fair that one person would buy it and the person across the street would choose not to. One tenant on one floor would buy it, and the person, the other tenant would choose not to. So it wasn't a fair thing to begin with, especially without the compliance. If we're gonna have this in place, everybody needs to participate, or else we get rid of them. But I, I do see the need for the revenue, I do see, you know, what's happening, and I think we're gonna rely on your input as to, we can do, as you did with the budget this year, we can provide you a budget without needing this revenue, and this is the reason why. That's crucial to formulating your budget, formulating our decision. So I'm glad this will go to the ordinance committee, and you can give them their input as well, and they can have their input, and finally, we'll take care of the bags once and for all. With that, I yield, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor in Seat Five, Counselor President.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice President. Just a couple of quick things, and I appreciate all my colleagues' input, and I appreciate everybody here's input tonight as well. I, I gotta say that when this came down from the mayor's, mayor's office, I do, I do want to make one quick comment before I get into my dialogue, is that I believe it was said on the radio that this was a hail mary, political hail mary. Unfortunately, I, my opinion is that I agree with my colleague in Seat Four that it is a little irresponsible to do that, no. I understand that times are tough, and we're trying to do what we can do, but making comments like that, to just throw it to the city council and deflect, I, I find that to be irresponsible, irresponsible on the mayor and irresponsible to the community. Now, with that being said, I, I appreciate a lot of the input that Mrs. Sahadi and Mrs. Viveras put in today with respect to additional money, additional revenue that's forthcoming, okay? The next, next fiscal year, this fiscal year, et cetera. What I, what we didn't talk about, though, and I think this whole council needs to have a full understanding before we have these discussions, is what are the anticipated expenses that we're gonna see increase as well going into the next fiscal year, okay? So what we, and, and we don't have to go into it, because I think you, you've highlighted some, but just some off the top of my head. First off, it is my understanding, based on speaking to some school committee members, that the school department's gonna ask for a little bit more money possibly going into FY19, okay? You have the discussions, I know that last fiscal year that the city received a million dollars, wasn't anticipated from the DPW, from Airport Road, correct? Is that correct, Mrs. Viveras? We received a million dollars. There's no guarantees that we're gonna see that money going into the next fiscal year. Councilor in Seat One indicated the OPEV, the pension liability, Mrs. Sahadi indicated the debt service. I want to give you the opportunity to let this council know that this program is not going to, is gonna go away, and we're gonna be able to afford this program going away. But I haven't yet been convinced that going into next fiscal year, that we are financially in any kind of financial position to reduce 2.1 million dollars in revenue. Everything that was said here tonight from the administration, I believe, just my opinion, that it's all estimates. And I know budgets are based on projections and estimates and all that, but we haven't seen any money for medical marijuana. We haven't seen any money for billboards. I know there's some counselors here specifically that want nothing to do with billboards. None. So I don't even know if the city council has, has the support for billboard revenue. We speak about the law department, we haven't spoke about Judge, Attorney Macy's department here, but is he going to need additional money for outside legal going into this fiscal year or next fiscal year? You don't have to get into that right now, but again, these are all unknowns. So what I think is fair to the council and the community, that is if the mayor wants to come down to the city council and have the city council vote to eliminate 2.1 million dollars in revenue, I know you're trying to get a sense from where the council's coming, but I just don't, if you're gonna come down, there needs to be a plan to replace the revenue. And we can't bank on new growth. I don't believe we can bank 2.1 million dollars in new growth, and I, I, I need to hear it. I need to hear a little bit more than, maybe we'll see medical marijuana money, maybe we'll see billboard revenue. Again, everybody's asking for more money, everybody here knows it, the school department, other department heads, the police department, the fire department, but I really want to know, and I'll conclude because you've been talking about this a while, Mrs. Viveras and Mrs. Sahadi, I'd appreciate both of your inputs. Do you really strongly believe that the city can afford eliminating next fiscal year, based on what you know, 2.1 million dollars in revenue?
So, Mr. President, all I can say to you on that point is that we do a five-year projection on our budgets. Mrs. Sahadi keeps it updated regularly. We have developed that pro forma with and without the additional revenues from the bags. It is a function of what our departmental needs will be, but I would just leave you with the fact that for the current fiscal year, we did provide you with a budget for fiscal year '19 that was balanced, that our department heads concurred, met their essential needs, and it did not include the bag revenue. So we're always looking to cut expenses as well, we haven't talked about much of that tonight, but, but we're constantly looking to get more efficient and, and to make reductions in, in expenses as well. So I, I guess to answer your question, I mean, we were, we were able to deliver the balanced budget last year without the revenues. As for next year, again, we're just getting started with the process.
We probably don't know yet. It's fair to say that, it's fair to say that we probably don't know what we're looking at in FY19. In addition to the other comments that we've made tonight on increased expenses, the trash contract next fiscal year goes up another million bucks, is that correct?
I, I think it's-
Or 900,000?
Yes, I thought it was 700 and change, but-
Okay, so it's a considerable amount of money that our trash contract's gonna go up next fiscal year, because it was a 10-year contract, and it gradually goes up every single fiscal year. So, Mrs. Sahadi, I'd appreciate your input on this, on this as well, as I indicated to Mrs. Viveras. Do you find that this city is, can afford to eliminate 2.1 million dollars of revenue in this budget, or next year's budget?
Well, again, I'm certainly in agreement with Mrs. Viveras. We, we do have a five-year projection. We are looking at efficiencies in some of the departments, we are looking at some of the increased costs, so as you just described, the cost of the trash, we are looking at, the bids are coming in for the transportation next, next week or this week? This week. That we're hoping for a significant savings on the transportation, because they've used a consultant, they've restructured the way they've bid it. So there are a lot of unknowns, so if we can find the savings, if you will, within the operating budget in terms of the expenditures, then we're not looking necessarily for 2.1 million dollars in revenue. On the flip side of that, if we're looking at, as Counselor in Seat One indicated, picking up some of the costs that maybe departments are on their wish list, that they didn't come forward with on their budget requests last year, but now they're thinking they would like some additional equipment or other items, then we need to play that information, or we need to put that information within the projections as well. So I know that some of your colleagues don't think it's early enough to be working on the budget, but it really is.
No, I, I know that, and I know you do.
And, and we're looking at what their needs are. The school department, you mentioned the school department in particular, you know, are we looking at what kinds of increases and where are their increases? Because, I mean, it's, it's important that if they're, if we're going to zero base but the budget, and we're gonna be efficient with, with all of our needs and our expenses within our budget, then it's important for them to be as well. We've done a lot of restructuring, Mrs. Viveras in particular, has done a lot of restructuring with the healthcare costs. And by some of these initiatives, we've had some significant savings in the past year. Now, we don't know what that's going to mean going forward. Again, we're only in, you know, the month of November, so we don't even have the November information with regard to healthcare, health claims yet. But all of that is really what comes into play, so-
All right, and, and look, I, I get what you're trying to do here. I think I do, but I, I just don't find it to be appropriate. Now, look, I can be convinced, if you can replace 2.1 million dollars plus its solid revenue every single fiscal year for, for the neck, for the foreseeable future, if you can convince me and show me that you're bringing in billboard revenue, and you can bring in all these other revenues, we can satisfy the schools not at 101.04% of net school spending, at 101% of net school spending, because the last fiscal year, I know we had these discussions, and Counselor in Seat One, and other counselors were saying, we were talking about 101% of net school spending, but the school department hasn't received 101% of net school spending. The school department received 101.04% of net school spending. So if Superintendent Malone and the finance team for the school department want to come back to this administration and say, "Look, I need another $2 million, or I need another $4 million for services to our students, we can't financially strap other departments for that." So if you can come down to this council with a concrete plan to replace over $2 million in revenue every single fiscal year, without the concerns in meeting 101% of net school spending, and the chief is, both fire chiefs are, are, are able to satisfy their departments, but not just skirting by and doing, you know, instead of, you know, 20 radios, we should have got 45 radios. We, we need to be able to fully furnish our, our, our department budgets on every department before we eliminate that. So when this administration is prepared to come to this council with, with revenue projections that meet and exceed net school spending, and, and you can show me increased revenues, that aren't estimates, that aren't what-ifs, we've been talking about medical marijuana money for, God, since I've been on the city council, the city, I don't believe, has received any money, Mrs. Sahadi, in medical marijuana, have they?
That's correct, no, we have not.
Okay, so we, we need to have an open and transparent discussion about this, and I would agree with my colleague in Seat Four that I just, I don't think the timing is right, right now. So I respect your positions, but I, I just don't think we're there right now. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in Seat One, Counselor Cana.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I think the council president had me go after him, because he stole all my questions just now. He, he literally walked by and took notes. So the, the only difference is, is I didn't have the footage, I was gonna ask you the question, but I wasn't gonna allow you to answer the question, because I felt bad, because I was gonna ask you to tell me what your stance was on whether or not we should eliminate it. I know, I know how you feel, I mean, I, I think anybody putting together a budget and having to deal with the various needs of the departments understands that this is absolutely not the way to go, but I don't expect you to go ahead and say that. We keep talking about the new, new revenues coming in, right? So, and again, I, I think my council president has kind of alluded to this, is we also failed to mention all the new increases that we have, just, you, you mentioned that at least the healthcare alone, on a $35 million to $40 million, what, I forget how large it is now, but anywhere from a 5% to 8% increase, that's, that's a significant increase, we're talking about millions. All of the collective bargaining agreements, what are we looking for, just step increases and collective bargaining increases? Have you, have you already looked into that, with that?
I haven't calculated that payroll stuff yet.
That's gotta be-
Just step increases, we don't, no, I-[1789.26]
No, I...
Plus, plus percentages. I mean, obviously, there's, you know, you have people on top steps, but...
The step increases, and now we haven't calculated that.
Okay. But I'm sure we're talking about probably at least a million dollars in that for, for all the various unions that we've got going on. So I mean, just, it's, it's nice to talk about the billboards, but, you know, I think everybody fails to realize that every time we're dealing collective bargaining agreements, there's cost, there's cost adjustments associated with that. I mean, we, we can go right down the line. So again, I'm in line with Council President. I think we, when we talk about new revenues, we also need to talk about what we currently have and the fixed costs, which includes salaries, unless we're, we're talking about doing layoffs. Because once the city council votes on collective bargaining agreements, that first year, we, we are forced to include those percentages. Now, we can reduce the staffing levels, but we have to maintain them. So outside of that, you know, I think we've beat a dead horse on that, but just on your analysis, the only question I had on your analysis was, and I'm curious in terms of, you know, when we get, just quick responses. We don't need to go too long on this, but when you're saying the 90% rate, what are we doing for the multifamily? So if you have a multifamily and there's a purple trash bag in there, so one tenant is, one, one resident is, is complying, and the other two units are not, are we considering that a compliance or not compliance?
No, during the audit, if you came up to a, there were six white bags, two purple, that was considered non-compliant.
Non-compliant, okay.
If you come up and there are six purple bags and two white bags, that would be considered compliant.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor in Seat Three, Counselor Kamara?
Back to the motion.
Yep.
The motion really is a simple one. It's a, and, and by the way, for those who, who have tried to paint this as something that's a sideshow or some, some kind of a, I don't know how it was previously described, but this, this has been a long-time effort on the part of the administration and on the part of some of us on the council that have been against this plan for a long time. It is timely, as has been pointed out clearly, as we prepare to have a budget prepared for us in January, that this be submitted to us. So I don't think there's any devious reason for this being before us. And in fact, this, this letter was sent to us on November 1st, and it was initially amended, it was initially requested that this go to the ordinance committee, and it was at my suggestion that it come to finance so all of us can weigh in on it. Because this has been before ordinance committee previously. Ordinance committee has given a recommendation to the council, and rather than pursuing that route, let the ordinance committee hear from us to see if there are a majority that say, eliminate, pay as you throw. Now, out of respect for my colleague in Seat Six, who has expressed concern for a resolution that he had sponsored, I believe in conjunction with my colleague in Seat Five, and that was a resolution to, to have property owners be responsible for the fines that may in fact be a result of tenants who are not following the ordinance. I want to give my colleague in, in Seat Six the opportunity to see, because he expressed it during the debate, that he wanted to basically see that either survive or die. So with that in mind, I will, at this time, withdraw my motion to see if in fact there are any other motions on the floor that should precede my motion.
Counsel, I just want to let you know that the resolution that you're referencing with respect to Counselor in Seat Six and Counselor in Seat Five's resolution is tabled in full council. It's not tabled in finance.
Okay.
So that item to enforce, whatever, Counselor Long's motion is, it's in full council. It's not tabled in finance.
Okay.
So before you withdraw your motion, just be cognizant of that.
Okay. So I, I will amend my motion in that it read that pending any change in who would be responsible for payment of fines, because right now it's the tenants that are responsible. So pending any change in who would be responsible for fines, that, and then the rest of my motion would stand, that this, the finance committee recommends to the ordinance committee that it eliminate the pay-as-you-throw plan. So that will give us the opportunity to, to basically adopt my motion with that pending. And if in fact during regular council meeting, there is a lifting of the motion to that Counselor LeBeau and Counsel Long sponsored, that then the ordinance committee can act accordingly.
So is that a motion to amend?
Yes.
Motion to amend has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. It is to add the language pending any change in who is responsible for the fines, move that the ordinance committee direct, the council direct the ordinance committee to remove the purple bag program. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Motion has been made as an amendment made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion on the amendment. Counselor in Seat Five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
I'm sorry, could you just read that again? Because what I'm reading in front of us...
Madam Clerk?
Is that it says, "I'm asking the discussion of the purple bag program continue," and that it's sent to ordinance, not that this council is asking them to.
Are you referencing the mayor's letter, per se? Or, because there's a...
That's all I have.
Yeah, well, okay, well, there's a motion before us that has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Madam Clerk, can you read that specific motion again?
The motion?
And the amendment? So it's the amendment that you're going to read, because that's what we're discussing right now.
Pending any change in who is responsible for payment of fines, that the city council direct the ordinance committee to eliminate the purple bag program.
On the amendment that has been made and seconded, you yield, Counsel Vice President? Motion has been made to amend, has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Any further discussion? Harry Nunroll call on the amendment.
On the amendment, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
Lala B. LeBeau?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Viveras?
No.
President Ponte?
No. Motion fails. There's a motion currently before us, move that the ordinance committee, move that the council direct the ordinance committee to remove the purple bag program. It has been made by Counselor in Seat Three, seconded by Counselor in Seat Eight. Any further discussion on that? Harry Nunroll call.
Just a clarification. Clearly, the ordinance committee can't direct the, I mean, the finance committee can't direct the ordinance committee to eliminate. It would have to be a recommendation to...
Isn't that what your motion is?
I believe it, it needs that clarification.
Okay, Madam Clerk, clarify. I have notes all over the place here.
Yeah, just...
Yep, thank you for the clarification.
The motion on the floor was that the council direct the ordinance committee to eliminate the purple bag.
It would be to recommend elimination.
Yes.
To recommend elimination.
Roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
Lala B. LeBeau?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
No. Motion carry?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
What was the vote on that fight?
Madam Clerk, what's the vote?
By four.
By four. Next order of business is going to be a communication from the mayor requesting the parking facilities controlled by the Fall River Redevelopment Authority be transferred back to the city. Mrs., Counselor in Seat Four, Counselor Kilby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to request on my colleagues' table this matter until we have, also have the Redevelopment Authority here. You know, I wouldn't like, you know, I'd like to have both parties unlike what occurred at the last, the last Redevelopment Authority meeting. So I do, would have some questions for some of those members. I know one member's here, Ms. Deon, but in order for me to be, I think it's essential in order for me to get the information I require to have members of that board here. So I'll ask my colleagues to table this, please.
Is that a motion, Counselor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Motion to table has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vice President LeBeau. Roll call. And this is on the motion to table item three before, I'm sorry, item four, which is the communication from the mayor requesting the parking facilities controlled by the Fall River Redevelopment Authority be transferred back to the city. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala B. LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Pelletier?
No.
Viveras?
No.
President Ponte?
Yes.
I would object.
There's nothing before us to object to yet. There's no motion before us. There's no motion before us to object to. I mean, this is before us for the very first time, but...
Your intention was to object to this item being on the, on the agenda, which the Redevelopment Authority is not present. That's not appropriate, but, you know. What happened with the vote?
The motion to table did not pass. Counselor in Seat Three, Counselor Kamara?
Yeah, I'd like, like to discuss, and, you know, if there's a, clearly, there needs to be a motion in order for there to be an objection, but prior to there being any motion, we often discuss an issue before making a motion. And in the discussion of the issue, my only concern, I was fully prepared to support tabling, but I did want to speak before tabling. My concern is that here we are approaching winter, and we have a parking garage that at least two levels of it are not being able to be used. Clearly, snow will fall, and the situation will be worse as a result of a delay. So my only concern about the motion to table, and I realize that we are going to have a meeting in December, and if I can have assurances that this issue will be back, back before us in December with Redevelopment Authority representation, then I, then I would be willing to have that short delay. But I just don't want to continue to have two parking garages that are vital, and I believe great opportunities for enhancement of revenue, that we not delay any, that we have minimal delay to getting those back into the city's coffers, if you will, so that we can proceed with getting them to be revenue generators. So that, that was my concern in not voting for the tabling.
Motion to table? Motion to table has been made by Counselor Kadeem. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby?
May I?
Not a motion to table, Counselor? There's a motion to ta...
Why are we tabling?
So there's another motion to table? There's no, nothing wrong with having another motion to table?
Obviously, there is.
Well, not, I don't think so. Counselor, there's a motion to table that has been made and seconded. There's no discussion on a motion to table. Roll call.
Correct.
Counselors Kadeem?
I'm confused. Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Nope.
Don't tell them what to do.
Long?
Yes.
Yes?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Don't tell them what to do.
No.
I'm confused. The no vote is not a table.
Let the clerk continue with the roll call, please.
My vote's no.
Thank you.
Pelletier?
No.
Viveras?
No.
President Ponte?
Yes. Motion fails. Counselor in Seat Five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
My question, I understand if Counselor in Seat Four wants additional information or wants the other party here, and I also understand Counselor in Seat Three, and I agree with him that if we were to table, that it should come back to us quickly. My issue with this is that the letter dated October 18th says that the administration is providing a financial pro forma, additional engineering information, et cetera. Where is that?
Mrs. Viveras?
Thank you. I do appreciate, just to clarify, and the Redevelopment Authority Board unanimously voted to transfer the garages back to the city of Fall River. So you're welcome to have them here, but they've already taken a formal vote to do so. And they did so in part because BBP, which is the operator of the garages, had expressed to them that they were not interested in continuing to operate the facilities.
Is there a contract with them?
There is, but it can be terminated upon notice. So again, we're not expecting that the Redevelopment Authority is, is going to alter that course. So there was some urgency. I, I think the BBP contract might be due to expire shortly, or at least they have the option of leaving. I don't, I don't have that contract right in front of me, but they clearly expressed to the Redevelopment Authority Board that they were not interested in continuing to operate. So, so we have a void there in terms of the operation of the facilities, and I'm sure that influenced the Redevelopment Authority's unanimous decision to turn the garages back over to the city of Fall River. So, and, but I do appreciate the council's willingness to expedite for those reasons. We have an operator that's not really interested in continuing. We have a Redevelopment Authority that is happy to turn the garages back. Some councils at least may recall that they were originally given to the Redevelopment Authority for really no money, just for them to generate some revenue, as, as I understand it way back. So again, they didn't pay for the garages initially, so they're basically just transferring them back to us under the same terms and conditions. So having set that stage, Mrs. Sahadi did do a pro forma, I believe. Counselors have copies of it? Yes, Counselor, and I apologize, I, you just received it seconds ago, so to speak. I, I don't know if Counselor in Seat One passed it down.
I don't have it. Is there something?
I just read it.
No, that's not it.
What I did with the document was I had BBP's financial statements for the years 14, 15, and 16. So I provided you with that information as the actual information that was reported in their financial statements. And then, in the fourth column, I provided you with some projections after speaking with Mrs. Ferrera from the traffic department. She did a walkthrough in both garages, and we talked about some of the contracts that are in existence right now for both garages. There's a contract from the post office that's expiring on December 31st. There's also a contract with the Pearl Street Garage. We are looking into, and we have gotten some quotes on doing kiosses in the garages instead of having salary and salary-type expenses. So having kiosses where you, you know, you purchase your parking permit and you put it in the window of your vehicle, and her PCOs would be doing the walkthroughs to, to ticket the vehicles, et cetera. Within the operating budget, if you will, or the projections, we're looking at only cosmetic expenditures at this particular point in terms of maintenance. There are several grants that are available out there, the Masswork Grant, and there's some transportation money that's available for garages. So we're hoping to apply for that sooner than later so that we can repair the Third Street Garage. If you look at the projections even on the Third Street Garage, I reduced the revenue projection significantly over what BBP had been collecting in the 14, 15, and 16 years because those two floors are currently closed. As you get to the bottom of the document, you know, in terms of marketing and other repair efforts, there are a lot of vacant spaces, particularly on, on Pearl Street. So if we were to market the property or the garages appropriately, we could certainly have additional revenue of approximately 150 spaces. So there is a potential here for some additional revenue for the city. As Mrs. Viveras said, the Redevelopment Authority has already voted to give these garages back. So it's really a matter of, of the council accepting the garages, and, and my concern was, will we make any money on these garages, or are we going to break even, or are we going to have a loss? Which, which is why we decided that it was important to do the projection. Which is why we decided that it was important to do the projection. So I was able to obtain the 14, 15, and 16 BBP financial statements and use them as a basis to do this projection. So again, it's a budget, it's a projection. It's not necessarily written in stone, but it gives you an idea of what some of the costs have been. Additionally, Counselor, Mrs. Sahadi touched on this. Thanks to our legislative delegation, there was money included in the state's capital bond bill for parking garages specifically for downtown Far River and waterfront Far River. So we would be looking to have those funds released to assist us with the repair of the garages. We do have a report that was done by an architect and a structural engineer, so we have some estimates as to what some of those costs might be. To Mrs. Sahadi's point, the plan initially would be to simply leave the top two levels closed and do the repairs that are necessary on the remainder of the facilities, and then work on the grant funding or the bonding funding in order to address the top two layers. But we do have the opportunity to move forward with the flat surface areas and also the existing levels within the two garages on a go-forward basis. Additionally, too, I would stress, and I think we touched on this in the letter, that we are trying to develop a comprehensive strategy regarding parking for our downtown central business district area. And so having these parking resources available to us is certainly going to assist us to that end. I can speak specifically for the old police station. One of the major barriers we've had, aside from its structural issues and repair, is that there really is no parking for the building. And anybody that wanted to make a significant investment in it would be needing parking spaces to go along with the building. So again, having that additional opportunity to create parking in certain key areas would also be a great asset to us.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. There's a lot of numbers that we just received in really tiny print.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Sahadi, you said you were worried about if these garages were going to turn a profit or break even, so I'm trying to find here, you have 14, 15, 16, the projection, comments, assumptions. This is with no repair work being done to the two floors that are closed?
Yeah, so if you look at the net income, I'm projecting about a $266,000, so a quarter of a million, $250,000 revenue source. It's primarily the savings that BBP didn't incur, that we would incur, was the reduction in the salaries. So I have not increased any rental spaces, if you will, spaces of, in both Third Street or Pearl Street in the projection, I have reduced the salaries and the benefits because we would go with the kiosks. Mrs. Ferreira has gotten us some estimates on the kiosses, and they're about $7,000 each. So the question would then be, from a logistic point of view, would you have one kiosk or a kiosk per floor? None of which would be significantly expensive.
And where are the salaries that you're talking about on this?
If you look at the, about halfway down, just under capital improvement, you see salaries, including benefits. Those were the salaries that were being paid currently.
So those would be completely gone?
They would be completely gone.
Okay. And then, do you have an idea? I know you said that you had some information about the repairs. Did you have an idea on the cost of the repairs to open the second and third floors?
So the routine maintenance issue is the line that Mrs. Sahadi addressed. Yes, Counselor. So, and these were based on the estimates provided by the architect at the time, so we would certainly have to go out for bid. What they did was they broke down the repairs in terms of high priority, and those would be the ones necessary for us to open up those upper levels. And then they talk about moderate priority because there are things we should be doing to address the structures overall, and then they had some optional numbers. I would specifically address your attention to the high priority repairs regarding the Third Street Garage. They put the high priority repairs at $1,225,000. And then on Pearl Street, they put the high priority repairs at, let's see, $1,225,000. Interesting, they're almost, it looks like the same one. It is. My apologies, that's the same number. It sounded familiar.
Point of information.
I was actually thinking it's around...
Counselor in seat three, a point of information.
I know we're getting into the minutiae, is it into the details here? I understand that the purpose of this communication is to have the real estate committee deliberate extensively, so I would just basically caution us to get too deep into the details because this eventually will go to real estate.
Yeah, and if I may, Mrs. Viveras, has the redevelopment authority voted to transfer these properties yet?
Yes, Mr. President.
Because the clerk's office hasn't received any kind of notification that that vote happened. In the letter from the mayor, even though I know you said it, it says that the board voted to authorize their council to prepare for the transfer.
Yes, because what has to happen is there has to be preparation of deeds, Counselor, so that they would go ahead to initiate that transfer, but only after the city council agrees to accept.
Okay, just wanted to let the clerk...
So just to clarify, the Pearl Street Garage high priority repairs, I did find that number, $740,000.
Counselor in seat one, a point of information.
Was that at a posted meeting that they took that vote?
Yes.
Just one, thanks.
Thank you.
Was it, it was?
It was a posted meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The meeting on the 10th, October 10th?
I don't have the letter.
That's what it says on the letter. That's the meeting we could refer to.
Yes.
So I guess my only question, I understand that it's going to real estate, and I try and make my questions as short as possible, so if my colleagues wouldn't mind if I asked a couple, I would appreciate it. Did the redevelopment authority have the same opportunity? I'm just wondering why they would give up revenue. Do they have the same opportunity to put the kiosks in and possibly get those grants or to make the repairs?
I suppose they could, Counselor, although I don't know that they were terribly excited about being in the parking business, parking garage or otherwise, especially when their operator said that they weren't interested in continuing. So again, the city offered to take the garages back, and we do have access to the grants and the staff.
Would they not have access to that?
Pardon me?
Would they not have access to those grants?
Well, again, they may. However, we had the issue with the operating. Right now, Mrs. Ferreira has the existing PCOS, and they're going to be able to monitor and enforce especially a kiosk arrangement, so they would be willing to move forward. Also, Counselor, if you note on the financials, Mrs. Sahadi presented, that the garages were really a break even. They weren't really generating any revenue because their operator chose to have the salaries as opposed to automating. So we had suggested that we would be automating, but that was not an option, that they were currently entertaining as well. So I think it was generally a decision that they hadn't paid for the garages in the first place, they were transferred from the city, and they were simply transferring them back so that they didn't have to concentrate their efforts on parking garages and parking services, and that perhaps, I don't want to speak for them in terms of their intent, but there didn't seem to be any question in their minds that transferring the garages back to the city would be something they were happy to do.
And then my last question, because you mentioned it, you said it would open up parking that, but hasn't the parking always, these parking spaces, these garages always been available? So how will transferring these back to the city open up additional parking?
Well, as an example, Counsel, we don't believe that the garages are being, and the parking spaces are being adequately utilized in the evening hours. They're, if they're reserved spaces, they're basically reserved spaces. The garage, I believe they used to shut it down once the staff went home at, I guess, maybe six or seven o'clock at night. So again, if we do kiosks, those kiosks can operate if we choose to charge for them, or we can, you know, have them available even just at no charge during the evening hours, whereas right now, you know, parking can be at a premium in the evening hours in the downtown areas. So, and again, we're not sure how extensively the spaces were marketed. We don't know because there is excess capacity, so we think that there might be other opportunities for us to market those opportunities as well. But again, Mrs. Sahadi was pretty conservative in her estimates in terms of new revenue. We understand that's a possibility, but even at pretty much status quo, with the changes in how we choose to operate the facilities, there's definitely revenue to be obtained.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor in seat four. I think this just asked, I had to count myself, yeah, Counselor, seat four. Right. So this just has a lot of questions that need to be asked, and, you know, right from the get-go, I think the redevelopment authority should be here. I mean, I think their intent, the sole purpose of the redevelopment authority is to take blighted, you know, property, property that's for downtown, use to revitalize it and all that other stuff. So it's right in their wheelhouse. Why, why we're taking a piece of property that could potentially generate revenue and bringing it onto the city side, back onto the city side, doesn't make any sense. I like, number one, like to get that answered. So whichever direction this goes in, I think that's a conversation that should be had. And I'm just curious with regards to the cost associated, just Third Street. So one of the things is that Third Street Garage is probably, what would you say, you know, at least 50% by city hall employees?
Right now, there are approximately 40 city employees that take spaces either on the flat surface or in the garage itself.
Out of how many spaces?
Third Street has 220 spaces.
So I know in the past, the redevelopment authority has tried to increase that, and that's obviously been met with, you know, some resistance, right? So are we now going to take that on and then increase these parking spots for city employees? I mean, we're going to have different rates for people coming in. I mean, and you talk about the grants, I know some of the grants initially were for new garages, not necessarily renovations, so I'm not sure if the grants that are available are for renovations. And then we get into the situation where we start renovating these. Are we now talking about elevators and things of that nature? And, you know, when we go back to Pearl Street, I mean, half the vacancies there are actually paid for by that company, First Bristol Corp, the HUDF building. So even though they're vacant, they're being paid for. So I think, you know, these are conversations that need to be had, but I mean, why, when you have, if you're projecting $421,000 in the redevelopment authority prior to some of the sale of property in the biotech, I was going to say the industrial park, but the biotech facility, getting some money in, I mean, they've always been hurting for money to try to do what they're supposed to be doing, to try to redevelop properties. I mean, they're the redevelopment authority. So why would, why would they not just go out, like we would go out, and have another contractor come in and occupy these properties? And why are they, why are they taking a vote to divest themselves of a property? I mean, to me, it just, and I think part of it comes down to the administration, too. I mean, the administration, at the end of the day, makes these appointments to the redevelopment authority, so I think we need to have, understand what the game plan is moving forward. So why, again, take on some additional costs when you have an entity that's charged with doing this and we're not utilizing the redevelopment authority properly? So I think the Counselor in seat four, I think the redevelopment authority should be here, we should be having these conversations, and I think they're lengthy conversations. I mean, if it's kiosks, if it's a simple, if it's a matter of kiosks, I mean, if you're telling me that you can put a kiosk and generate $421,000 in additional revenue, like, I don't understand how you would have any difficulty whatsoever putting this out to bid and having companies come in and do this. And I would tell you that the, probably because the return on investment just isn't there with the amount of cost and infrastructure that needs to be put in, that it's worth anybody's while to do that. And if that's the case, then we need to have that conversation about either demoing it or whatever the case may be. But if there's, if there is a parking concern, we should talk about it collectively on how we're going to address the parking and redevelop the downtown area. I mean, that's, I think it's a more global approach than just coming to us saying, please take over the parking garages. You know, to have these conversations now to say, okay, we're going to take them off, take them over, without first understanding why would we want to, first of all, why does the redevelopment authority want to send it over, but what's the overall goal? I mean, I feel like we're kind of reaching now because we walked down Main Street, we walked down Second Street, we walked down Third Street, and parking is tight, so let's take it back over and, again, let's the city, you know, try to reinvest money, and now we're going to talk about making these metered spots so that our, you know, traffic officers can go into these garages and start ticketing people. I mean, there's a lot that goes into this, and I don't think this is a five-minute conversation that should be had tonight, but I think it's more than, and I appreciate this information, but it's more than this information tonight, you know, two minutes before a conversation to say, okay, we're going to digest all this information and expect us to vote on getting this property over. I think this should be at least some conversation in real estate as to, number one, do we want to take it over? What's the pros and cons to it? What's the overall, even from maybe economic development, should be having these conversations in terms of the strategy with regards to these parking garages. So that's, that's just my take as one Counselor. So again, I'm going to echo my colleague in seat four. I think this should either be referred to real estate for further discussion, which I think it has to go anyway, but, or a matter of tabling it and finance so that we can have the redevelopment authority here and all the parties so that we can have an open and constructive dialogue with regards to these garages.
The only thing I would add, Counselor, is, first of all, the request was to send it to the real estate committee, so we have no objection to that. We figured there'd be more an in-depth conversation. I would, I would say that I think that the proposal that is before you benefits from the fact that we do have a traffic department and a traffic commissioner who was able to provide that kind of guidance. It was not something that was on the redevelopment authority's purview or within their wheelhouse, if you will. So I mean, I think there's an expertise that the city is able to provide to maximize the revenue. There have been some decisions made in terms of allowing BBP to operate. Technology was not considered, and consequently, they were break even, so they were not making any money on the garages. Clearly, the maintenance has not been done, and they would be the first to acknowledge that. They're essentially a volunteer board, and there's been turnover, so I think there are a lot of reasons, and I don't want to speak for them, and I'm sure they'd be happy to come to a real estate committee meeting and have that conversation, but I think that they felt that there was an opportunity here to turn them over to an entity that might be better suited. We have the ability to have a grant writer who's able to provide the applications for the funding, whether it's Massworks or the state capital bond. So again, the city has a lot of resources that would allow us to maximize the use of these assets that may not have been available to the redevelopment authority, so...
But I think we can do that in conjunction now, so I guess it just comes back to the redevelopment authority. I mean, where are their revenue sources coming from?
Again, they have 90 acres remaining in the bio-park, so they have land to sell.
Right, it's tied up, but that's my point, it's tied up in lands.
Correct.
And then, once you get that, and if they sell it, you've got money there, and if you stop purchasing additional money, you need some additional revenue coming in. If not, there's no point in having the redevelopment authority.
Well, at the risk of touching on what may be considered a sore subject, they also have two urban renewal plans that they're anxious to get underway. For the waterfront and the downtown, that will see a lot of economic opportunity generated. Those plans are with the city council right now, but I think there's clearly additional development opportunity for them that would provide resources and economic opportunity. So I don't know that they're currently lacking for revenues and resources. And again, I think the plan was to put their attentions in the areas where they're best suited, hence urban renewal, downtown waterfront, bio-park, and to allow the assets to come back to the city.
But just bear with me, though, so you're going down the path that I'm trying to take you down, is, that's what they're supposed to be doing. Urban development, right? Downtown, the waterfront. What's more important to downtown than parking? So I don't understand, like, if that's, if that's a major component of it, why would you divest yourself of two properties?
Because we're in, we're in the traffic business, Counselor. They're not. We're in the traffic management business.
Okay, but we can, but we can do that, and they can still maintain that. If that's what we, we can have a partnership, if that's what they want to do, and they want enforcement, and we want to gain additional revenue, then we could do that. I mean, you, you don't need to take the properties over to have traffic go into those buildings, and I mean, those garages and start ticketing people if they want to put meters in. I mean, it's a win-win situation. I mean, you'd obviously have to go through ordinance for that, but I mean, outside of that, I just don't understand, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, if you're talking about downtown, you're talking about parking, they go hand in hand, and if it's a potential to generate additional revenue for them to use as an asset to continue to do more urban development, I don't know why we're having the conversation about taking these properties.
Well, that was the original intent when it was transferred to them, Counsel, but I don't think it worked.
Well, with that, I yield. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara?
Mr. President, you know, it's 10 past nine, and we're still in finance, and knowing that this is being asked to go to real estate, I'm not going to comment on this any further. I'm going to wrap it up just by saying I'll hold my remarks, and I think the rest of us should probably, whatever questions we have, wait till, as my colleague said, the members from the redevelopment board come forward, and we can have all discussions in real estate. To do it today and then to do it again back then is just going to waste a lot of valuable time as far as this meeting goes tonight. With that, I yield.
Motion to refer to real estate?
Motion to refer to the real estate committee has been made...
Would they request that the redevelopment authority be present?
Motion to refer to the real estate committee, and the chair invite the redevelopment authority to be present, has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion?
Just one question.
Counselor in seat three?
Through the chair to the table, is there still a businessman for Better Parking, BPP? Does that group still exist?
They do, Counsel.
So they too should be invited to the real estate. So I would add...
It certainly could be.
I would just add, as a friendly motion to the referral to real estate, that RDA as well as BPP and city administrators...
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment. Accepted, so be it.
Did you guys just make a motion and accept it?
Yeah, we made a motion to amend a friendly way.
Oh, okay. And what is that, again, from the record?
In addition to the RDA, the BPP...
BPP? All right, the chair has the discretion to invite whoever he wants to the meeting.
That's true.
Thank you. Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah, just fast. You want to say it to the committee? No problem. But the redevelopment, send it back to us, they're good for nothing. They want us to take it back. All well and good. They didn't spend no money, and they're fixing the building up, and Mrs. Sahadi says, look, we've got grants out there, we've got kiosks out there, we can fix it, and maybe we can get some revenue out of this. So I think that's the way to go. They don't want it. Do we want it? We see our way clear that maybe we can take care of it, picks it up with the grants, put the kiosks in there, and let's make some money for the city. Maybe we'll get rid of the bags. I yield.
On the motion to refer to the real estate committee, any further questions, comments, or concerns? Haring non. or concerns? Hearing none. Motion has been made to refer to the real estate committee has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Aye.
And that will conclude finance. Motion to adjourn finance is made by Counselor Kadim. Uh, did I what I say? Motion to adjourn finance has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Two-minute break.
Two-minute break. For our city council meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Yeah.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Bavaris?
Here.
President Ponti.
Here. Everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the name of God, and under God, and in the name of the Lord God, and in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a request from the mayor to appoint Daniel Reitzes to the Board of Police.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, Counselor in seat three.
Just a question. Mr. Reitzes, I understand, was previously a board member with the election commission?
Traffic commission.
Traffic commission, and he has resigned from that commission?
Yes.
So, therefore, this would be the only board he'd be a member of?
Correct.
And while I'm prepared to vote for this confirmation, I do agree with comments that were made earlier, that this is probably a commission that should be looked at, a board that should be looked at either to eliminate or to change its purpose. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat five. Counselor Vice President Lavoe.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief statement on some of the new appointments following, I only watched five minutes of it, but the redevelopment authority meeting and all of the craziness in the news and social media and, and radio after, you know, the perception of stacked boards and, and, you know, vendetta is being done through these boards. I think we need to, to alleviate that perception. So, going forward, I know there are some counselors that are not confirming any new appointments. I'm not gonna go that far. I mean, I, I know some of these folks. However, if there's anybody that's coming before us that is, you know, very much aligned themselves with the mayor, I, I don't think that that's a perception that the board wants, that the council wants, or even that the administration would want. So, I will be voting no on those. I'm, I'm happy that, thankful that people are, you know, willing to serve, but at this time and place, the perception is, is just not what it should be. I yield.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor in seat four.
Just wanna say, Counselor in seats four is supportive of that.
Thank you. Yield?
I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as I've stated before, I will not be supporting any appointments coming down from the mayor's office. Again, I know some of these folks, and, and quite frankly, I think some of the, the mayor's appointments are self-serving in its nature, and I guess some of the appointments have to be political and should be political, but I think what we've seen is just not good for the city. So, again, I'll, I'll continue not to support any appointments coming down.
Thank you. Anything further?
Just one question.
Counselor in seat five?
Just to clarify, this gentleman was previously on the traffic commission since 2007, continuously since 2007, and he's just wanting to switch over to this committee. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Further, anything further? On the appointment, roll call.
On confirmation of the appointment, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Lavoe?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
No.
One B is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Reverend J. Mello to the Greater Fall River Vocational School District Committee.
Move adoption of the appointment.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Joseph Kamara. Discussion, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, I'd just like to say, maybe it's a conflict of interest, 'cause I go to that church every Sunday at seven o'clock mass, and it only lasts a half hour, so that's pretty good.
Just don't go to, no confession.
Don't, no, no confession, but I'm gonna give them the vote tonight, no problem, but keep the mass short, half hour. You all go there, half hour mass, we're good.
And that's at St. Michael's?
I support it.
Okay.
Reverend.
Thank you. Thank you. Yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Just wanna say, years ago, Counselor Pelletier used to go to St. Joseph's mass, that was 15 minutes if there was a gay one.
Father Mac.
Father Mac. That I yield.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Lavoe?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
No. Motion carries?
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I have a request for the appointment of John Garcia to the planning board.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Oh, is Mr. Garcia a member of any other board or commission?
He is not.
Anything further?
No further questions.
No further questions. You yield, Counsel. Anything further? Hearing none. On the adoption, roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
Lallaby Lavoe?
No.
Long?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
No.
Motion fails.
Motion failed?
Yes.
Motion fails. Next order of business?
Mr. President, if I may.
Briefly comment. There were...
Just a brief comment.
Hold, hold on, one second. The clerk is indicating to us that we need to make a vote one way or another on the Garcia appointment to the planning board, or it will go into effect by city charter.
Leave to withdraw.
Can I just?
Counselor in seat two.
Thank you. Just wanna point out that I know some, an individual came and spoke disparaging remarks about Mr. Garcia, but Mr. Garcia served on this board for four years, was a Flanagan appointee. If you read his resume, he is qualified to do the job. If you watch the planning board meetings, he does do a good job. Maybe some counselors have an issue with him, not that I know of, 'cause I don't know anyone. I, I know him personally. I think he's a qualified, upstanding citizen of this community for a long time, and I don't want counselors to get bad information or wrong information. One person's opinion is perfectly entitled to that person, but I don't want counselors here to think that this man is not capable of doing the job he's been doing for the past four years, appointed by the Flanagan administration. This administration's just carrying him over. With that, I yield.
We're talking about Mr. Garcia on the planning board? Because this isn't, not a reappointment, this is a new appointment. So, he served at a prior term?
He's on the planning board for four years.
Madam Clerk, it's not in his resume that he served on a planning board for four years.
Charles Monis.
Either way, is there a motion? We have to make action on this.
Point of, point of information.
Counselor in seat one?
Yes.
Counselor in seat one, you're part of information.
To the clerk, so would a...
Uh, leave to withdraw be in action?
Yes.
Okay, is there...
My fault.
Motion, leave to withdraw? Motion to give leave to withdraw, which is item one C, John Garcia to the planning board, that has been made by Counselor Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vice President Lavoe.
I apologize.
It's all right, no worries. There's a motion that has been made to give item leave to withdraw. There's no discussion on this item. Roll call.
On granting the item leave to withdraw, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Lavoe?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes, and that's to give the item leave to withdraw. Action's been taken. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Just a point of clarification, though, to the clerk. Why isn't a, a defeat also an action?
If the, the motion to confirm failed, I would, I would suggest that there could be a challenge, that there wasn't an act, you, you didn't actually take any action one way or the other.
I agree.
You didn't approve, but you didn't deny.
I agree.
I see it as an action, but that's okay.
I agree. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Item one D was, is a request for the appointment of Ryan Lyons to the Election Commission. We have, however, received a request to withdraw from the mayor at this time.
Motion to accept request. Motion to accept, and a give leave to withdraw?
Yes, please.
Has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item two A is the request for the reappointment of James Souza to the Community Preservation Committee.
Again, these are, these are reappointments. Motion to adopt James Souza to the Community Preservation Committee has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Lavoe?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
No. I'm sorry, yes. I wanna go on record by yes on that, I'm sorry.
Item two B is the request for the reappointment of Joan Menard to the Greater Fall River Vocational School District.
Motion to adopt, second. Motion to adopt has been made on the reappointment of Joan Menard to the Greater Fall River Vocational School District Committee, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Any discussion? Roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Lavoe?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Item two C is the reappointment of Charles Monis to the planning board.
True doubt. Motion to adopt, the reappointment of Charles Monis to the planning board has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Joseph Kamara. Discussion, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
This was the individual I'm referring to. I apologize for the mistake.
No worries.
Mr. Monis, no, Mr. Garcia.
Fair enough. Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Here, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Just the same question, no other board or commission that this gentleman has upon him?
Mr. Monis serves on the Community Preservation Committee as the planning board's designate.
As the planning board's designate. Okay, very good, thank you.
Motion has been made to confirm the reappointment, has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Lavoe?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Item number three is the mayor's request for the approval of the TIF agreement for Millstone Medical Outsourcing LLC.
Motion to refer to finance? Motion.
I believe Mr. Monis is in the audience, should be receiving recognition.
Mr. Monis here? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk, introduce that again, please.
The item three is the mayor's request for the approval of a TIF agreement for Millstone Medical Outsourcing LLC.
There's a motion to refer to finance has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion on the motion to refer to the committee on finance. Mrs. Bavaris is asked to be heard. Is there a motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vice President Lavoe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I just wanted to advise you that this matter is scheduled to go before the state's Economic Advisory Council on December 13th. I realize you have a meeting next week, but they do appreciate getting information back from the community regarding local incentives and ample time for the members to all consider it. So, it is somewhat time-sensitive. I mean, if you, I know Mr. Huey is here and his consultant.
I withdraw my motion. Thank you.
So, if there was any possibility, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have, but there is some urgency.
Motion to adopt, second. Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, just real quick, as a member of the board, this gentleman's gonna make a $10 million investment in our community, provide over 100 jobs, close to 100, and it's a good test for the city, it's a good project for the individual to provide. He's been in the city since 2001, looking to expand and stay in the city. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I hope the council will adopt it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything further? On the motion to adopt that has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we do, do we roll call?
The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Item number four is the mayor's request for the reapproval of the Order of Taking from 1941, 1945 Bay Street.
Move the reapproval order of taking?
Second.
Motion to approve the reapproval, reapproval and order of taking has been made by Consul Stephen Kamara, seconded by who? Consul Pelletier, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have the Traffic Board recommendation to amend the ordinances?
Motion to refer. Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Consul Akilby. Seconded by?
Second.
Consul Stephen Kamara, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have the Board of Election Commissioners official results of the November 6th state election.
Motion to adopt, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Akilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Item seven is a communication from the mayor regarding a recent appointment to the Historical Commission. This is simply requesting that the name be amended to reflect the individual's lead.
Move adoption of the?
Just accept and place on file would be appropriate here.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on files has been made by Consul Akilby. Seconded by Consul Pelletier.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
We resolve that the city council president establish a special committee or task force to review suggestions and/or proposals to establish a home rule charter to create a city council, city manager form of government for the city of Fall River.
Move adoption of the resolution?
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Stephen Kamara, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Akilby. Discussion, sponsor of the resolution, Consul in seat three, Consul Kamara.
Well, I think it should be adopted because it's only three lines, and I know how much the council likes short resolutions. This is really just an exploratory first step toward the possibility, and it doesn't commit the council to anything in the future. It really is an opportunity for the council president to then appoint a committee that would look into the matter. I do think, though, in, just to speak to the issue, that some of us remember such guys as Mayor Grant and Mayor Kane and Mayor Aruda and Mayor Mitchell, the first Mitchell, and many other mayors. And through the years, I think it's at least come clear to me that there's a benefit to having a professional city manager not tied to elections in order to achieve the position of chief executive of the city. It's, again, not about any particular mayor, this is about a process. And as an urban policy analyst who's studied cities as my profession, and as a 23-year office holder in the community, both serving as a school committee member and a city council, I think this is an issue that deserves attention. I'm also reminded, and we'll have plenty of time to talk probably over the next year or two, or maybe even longer, about this possibility, because this is not going to be a quick process. But I am reminded by a very notable businessman in our community who does developments all around New England and beyond, that the cities that he most appreciates, and he told me this as an aside, not in relation to this resolution, but told me that the cities he most enjoys going to develop businesses are those cities that have professional city managers. And he mentioned specifically the city of Worcester and the city of Cambridge. And I think any of us who know what happened recently with Worcester achieving, getting Pawtucket Red Sox to go from Rhode Island to Massachusetts, or if any of us know Cambridge and the success that Cambridge has in attracting businesses to that community, you know that it's the city manager that leads that effort. And then finally, I would say, back some time ago during Carlton Viveras's administration, there was, there was a task force that was established that recommended that Fall River hire a city administrator. Interestingly, that task force said that that city administrator should serve overlapping terms of mayor, and that person should be non-political. In fact, it was written into the agreement that the city administrator should not go to any political events, should not buy any political fundraising tickets, and that was the recommendation then of the Fall River Task Force. Basically, they were suggesting back then during Carlton Viveras's administration that we should move toward a city administrator. Unfortunately, I believe, through the years, that quality of city administrator, and Bob Connors was the first man to hold that position, has changed dramatically. So I think it needs to be looked at again, and the idea is to establish a professional, look at, consider the possibility, and to have the president of the council serve as is allowed in the charter to establish this committee. And then we'll have more to talk about as the weeks and months come if this is adopted. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. Motion has been made to adopt, has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
A roll call, Madam Clerk.
Consuls Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala B. LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number nine is an order granting permission to Stephen Mello to operate Choice Collision Center, an auto body shop located at 645 Great Avenue.
Any objections?
Hearing no objections. Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Akilby, seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have an order granting permission to Louis Pimental for permission to operate an auto repair shop located at 1138 Pleasant Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Long.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have an order granting permission to Hyde Development LLC to remove a total of 25 feet of curbing at 217 Napoleon Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Akilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have an order granting permission to Hyde Development for the removal of 28 feet of curbing at 143 Napoleon Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Long.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Pelletier, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
We have an order granting permission to Bridgette Viveras removing curbing at 572 Locust Street, a total of 36 feet.
To adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Akilby, seconded by Consul Stephen Kamara, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
14 is permission to remove curbing to Michael Kudo for a total of 27 feet and 7 inches at 555 Broadway.
Move adoption, second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Stephen Kamara, seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Item 15 is the order granting permission to Mass Electric at North Main Street.
Motion to adopt with the condition that it's curb to curb?
Motion to adopt with the condition that it is curb to curb has been made by Consul Akilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Pelletier, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Item number 16 is the order establishing the FY 2019 tax factor.
And the, the order that is before us, Madam Clerk, can you clarify?
The order that is before us is based on the 1.72 shift.
Mr. President?
On, on the order that is before us, Consul in seat one, Consul Kadeem?
I want to make the motion that we approve the tax shift of 1.70, which is a residential tax factor of 0.805211.
Second.
Motion to amend the tax factor? Say that again, Consul, I didn't quite hear you. Sorry. 1.70?
1.70, 1.70 tax shift with a residential tax factor of 0.805211.
Motion has been made, has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion? Consul in seat three, Consul Kamara.
Yeah, I would hope that this would be defeated. This basically goes beyond what even the city administration is suggesting that we should be doing. And it would certainly put a greater tax burden on the residential taxpayers. We spoke earlier this evening that we recognize that the residential taxpayers are, are very unfairly treated in terms of the increases that they've been facing, particularly as it relates to city and water bills. They're also going to be facing increases just because of the valuation of their properties being increased. So there will be increases anyway, but to put an additional burden upon them, I'm prepared to move that we do, that we move to 1.75 as our tax factor, but should that fail, I certainly would be willing at least to support the city's recommendation that we go to 1.72 at a minimum.
Thank you.
So I would ask that this motion be defeated.
Discussion continues, Consul in seat two, Consul Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. At 1.70, Chair of my colleague, seat one, what would the rate, average level be raised?
So that was the, so that's the current fact that we're at.
Average is 136, if my memory serves me correctly, my notes.
I got it right here.
That's for 1.72.
1.70.
$36.39. The commercial increase would be $374.44, and I guess that's the only.
All right, thank you. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. On the motion to 1.7, though, for the tax shift that has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the order, the amount would be 0.805211, which is a shift of 1.70. Consuls Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala B. LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Viveras?
No.
President Ponti?
No.
The motion fails.
Motion fails.
Move adoption of the 1.75?
Motion to adopt 1.75 tax shift has been made by Consul Stephen Kamara, is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, any further?
Motion to adopt 1.72.
Motion to adopt 1.72 tax shift has been made by Consul Pelletier, seconded by Consul Joseph Kamara, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the shift of 1.72, which is 0.799645. Consuls Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala B. LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion passes?
The motion passes. And number 17 is the order adopting the percentages of the local tax levy. We have the residential in the amount of 62.5568, open space is zero. Commercial is 21.7052, industrial is 9.9967, and personal property 5.7413.
Motion to adopt 2019 tax levy?
Motion to adopt the 2019 tax levy has been made by Consul Akilby, seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have the police chief's report?
Move adoption, the police chief's report?
Motion to approve and adopt, police chief's report has been made by Consul Stephen Kamara, seconded by Consul Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have an auto body shop license renewal for Globe Auto at 165 Tucker Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Akilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Consul in seat three, Consul Kamara?
Madam Clerk, all approvals, no objections?
No.
Aye.
You yield, Consular?
I yield, thanks.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Item 20, our auto repair shop renewals on behalf of Everett Mellow at 325 Bedford Street, Michael Kamara at 334 President Avenue, Globe Auto at 165 Tucker Street, and George Marrera at 581 Pleasant Street.
Motion to drop it to the same question.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Akilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Item number 21 is the request to transfer auto repair shop license located at 127 Eastern Avenue from Karen and Donald Rochefert to Ziad El Qori.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Long.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Pelletier, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have a number of claims?
Motion to refer to cooperation, Consul, has been made.
Second.
By Consul Long, seconded by?
Second.
Consul Stephen Kamara, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Motion to take 23 to 31 after reading?
Motion to take items 23 through item 31 has been made by Consul Akilby after reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it, Madam Clerk.
Items 23 and 24 are communications from the Attorney General's Office with regard to open meeting law complaints filed by Patrick Higgins and Joe Good. Item 25 is a communication from PERAC regarding their FY 2020 appropriation. 26 is the Department of Public Utilities Notice of a Public Hearing. 27 is National Grid and Eversource regarding the Bell Rock Substation Rebuild Project. Item 28 will need an alternate motion. This is a request from the city engineer for a street opening for pavement less than five years old. This would need to either be approved or denied.
Are we going to indicate 29, 30, and 31 as well, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Does that, I believe, that's a motion?
29 and, excuse me, 29 will also need a motion to approve. That is a request for a structure on a public way. And 30 and 31 can be accepted and placed on file. Those are minutes of Planning Board held on September 27th and October 30th.
If we can have a new motion to take items 24, 25, 26, 27, 30, and 31 together?
Yes, I apologize, Mr. President.
So move.
Motion, motion to take those items together has been made.
Just as a part of parliamentary process, since we already did make that other motion, we should reconsider it and then separate these four.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. A motion to reconsider? Is there a motion to reconsider? Motion to reconsider has been made by Consul Long, seconded by?
Second.
Consular Viveras, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
And move that we separate items 23, 24, 28, and 29 for additional action.
What, 23? 24? 25?
No.
26? 27? 30 and 31?
No, 23, 24, and 28 and 29, separate those four. Just do 23 then.
How about we just do these items individually? Because we're wasting too much time.
That would make life so much easier.
Let's do that. Madam Clerk, reintroduce item 23, we'll vote on that individually, we're wasting too much time.
Item 23 is a communication from the Attorney General's Office regarding an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins for July 12th.
Prefer to cooperation, Consul.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made, is that what that was?
No, it's a motion.
Motion to refer to cooperation, Consul, has been made by Consul Akilby.
This is simply the Attorney General notifying you that the matter is closed.
Oh, oh, okay.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by Consular Long. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it, next order of business?
Item 24 is a communication from the Attorney General's Office regarding an open meeting law complaint filed by Joe Good. The matter has been closed.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
PERAC FY 2020 appropriation.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate?
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Stephen Kamara, seconded by Consul Long, discussion? Hearing none, discussion, Consul in seat one? Consul Kadeem?
Can we also, can I amend the motion to accept and place on file and also send a letter to the administration to resend a letter to the retirement board that we get our own actuarial? Or a new actuarial outside of PERAC?
Motion to amend, motion to accept and place on file and amend that a letter be sent to the administration for actuarials to come from?
Anybody besides PERAC.
Anybody besides PERAC. Has been made by Consul Kadeem, is there a second on the amendment?
That they send, that they send a letter to the retirement board?
Yep.
Yes.
We have that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion has been made to amend.
We're getting grabbed.
Has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it. Motion to accept has amended?
So moved.
Has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ice have it.
Have a notice of filing in a public hearing submitted by the Department of Public Utilities.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Long, seconded by?
Second.
Consul Pelletier, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The ice have it.
I'm sorry. Item 27 is a communication from National Grid and Eversource Energy regarding the Bell Rock Substation Rebuild Project.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Long, seconded by?
Second.
Consul Stephen Kamara, discussion? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Discussion, Consul in seat one, Consula Skadim.
Sorry, can we just make sure that the administration is talking with National Grid to make sure during this rebuild we don't have any situation that transpires with the Merrimack Valley and that police and fire are all aware of what's going on, residents are aware, and things of that nature?
Madam Clerk, if you could indicate that in a letter to the administration, Consula Skadim, tomorrow, that'd be great. Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 28 is a communication from the city engineer requesting the opening of 152 John Street to install natural gas service.
Motion to approve, deny? What's the will? Motion to approve has been made by Consula Long, seconded by?
Second.[1351.65]